Good evening and welcome. Call to order, the Wednesday, March 29th, meeting of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. I'd like to have the pledge to the flag by the first graders of Sapphire. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand you have a song for us this evening?
I do, Mr. Israani. I do want to just take a brief moment to... Sorry. I would just like to take a brief moment to thank yourself, as well as Mrs. Rodriguez, Board of Ed members, as well as our cabinet members for giving us the honor and the privilege to host tonight's meeting. I would also like to thank Mr. Horn, Mr. Rose, Mr. Luke Candy for assisting setting up in our gymnasium, along with Mrs. Thurston, Mr. Harrigan, Mrs. Guerrero, and Mrs. Mayer, because this doesn't live in my building. So, everything had to be transported over to set up for tonight's meeting, and I appreciate them. As you look around the room tonight, you will see our students' displays, their drawings and writings throughout the room. Thank you to our teachers and students for all of their beautiful work. I also want to take a quick thank you, if you can raise your hands, to Nolan, Brandon, Evelyn, and Cameron for leading tonight's pledge of allegiance. At this point, yep. I would now like to introduce Mrs. Veltagio, who is our music teacher, and our first grade students from Mrs. Rendy's, Mrs. Cahill's, and Mrs. Myssenger's classes. They have a special song that they would like to sing for you tonight.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to Sapphire. We just wanted to tell you that we've been talking a lot this year at Sapphire about kindness. And we also had a visit from a very special person named Red Grammer. And Red Grammer has so many wonderful songs about kindness, we've been singing a lot of them. And we also found this other song, this is not a Red Grammer song, this one actually was written by Bruno Mars. But we felt like it really, really went along well with our kindness theme, so we would love to sing this one for you.
(singing) If you ever find yourself stuck in the middle of the sea, I'll sail the world to find you. If you ever find yourself lost in the dark and you can't see, I'll be the light to guide you. Find out what we're made of when we are called to help our friends in need. You can count on me, but one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you, but four, three, two, I'll be there. That's what friends are supposed to do, oh yeah. Ooh. You can count on me, 'cause I can count on you.
Thank you.
We're gonna just take a moment to allow our first graders and their families to leave, and we'll get back to business. "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." Mr. Huberth and Ms. Carroll express their regret that they're unable to be here with us this evening. Do I get a motion for the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. We have a statement from Ms. Rodriguez.
I did, I wanted to just make a statement before, this is the public comment section, and I see that there are many parents here and many students here to talk about the MW Ice Hockey Varsity Team. And I just wanted to clarify something and make a comment. I've had an opportunity to speak to several parents, and they shared their disappointment with my letter, and they didn't understand why I had to send that letter at that time. And what I wanted to express and explain was that at tonight's meeting, there's gonna be a conversation and a discussion and a recommendation about what to do with new modified teams. And so, I felt it was important for me to share that before we publicly spoke about it. I didn't think that it was the right thing not to say before, and I knew sending that letter would invite more people to come and speak. And so, my hope is that after tonight's meeting, that you or someone will give us a name or email us, so that there's a contact person, so that we can sit down and speak with them. Thank you.
Questions and comments from interested citizens. Kevin Schroeder?
Thank you. Good evening. Hello? Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone from Monroe Woodbury, students, faculty, and parents. Superintendent Elsie Rodriguez, you may have addressed some of the issues I was gonna bring up, but I'm gonna bring them up anyway.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes, and can I just say something else before you begin, Mr. Schroeder?
Sure.
If there are specific questions that you feel need to be answered before my meeting, please feel free to email me.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. On Monday...
No, just... The noise.
We good now?
We have somebody close the door, because the noise is coming in, and we can't hear you speak. Thank you.
We good?
We're good, thank you.
First of all, does everyone on the board, including yourself, Ms. Rodriguez, have a copy of the yearbook, 2016-17?
Yes, the young man did put it on our tapes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure everyone has that. Okay, on March 27th, 7:55 PM, we all received, everyone, the Monroe Woodbury varsity team parents received an email from you at 7:55 PM on March 27th, Monday evening, basically stating that there will possibly be no more varsity ice hockey team. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to know, what was that based on?
So, Mr. Schroeder, let me explain how this works. Public comment is where people get up and they make comments. If there are questions, we don't do a Q&amp;A. We will respond to your comments afterwards, but that's how the practice of public comment is.
Okay, afterwards, meaning after this meeting, or...
After this meeting.
Okay.
So, part of what I'd like to do is set up a meeting, whether it's with you or someone else who represents the team, for me to be able to answer all of those questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that decision, when you sent out the email, okay, was there any prior notifications to the ice hockey world in regards to what your decision may be based on?
Again, I'm not going to respond to every question, to any question.
Okay, so, you just want me to make statements?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. I think there's many, many options. If we were to sit down and negotiate with anyone from the Monroe Woodbury varsity hockey team, parents, whether it be a group or individually, I'm sure there's a way, if it was a budget issue, or whatever issue may be, we'd be able to negotiate it. I feel there was no negotiation, there was just a decision made. I'm not sure what the evidence was to make that decision, and I don't feel there is enough evidence to make that decision. So, I'd like you to really take into consideration of keeping the ice hockey Monroe Woodbury team going. My daughter plays on the team, she's the first female to play on the team, and I like opportunities for other females and girls in this school district from eighth grade and on to be able to have that opportunity that my daughter is having right now. So, it'd be a very sad day for Monroe Woodbury Ice Hockey, and also the whole athletic program, as far as I'm concerned, and many people here as well, if that was the end. I just felt it'd be a dead sentence to the Hockey Association, as well as the children. At the end of the day, it's about the children, it's not about the game itself. Also, with that said, is that something that would be considered?
Again, I, there's gonna be many, we have about 20 people speaking, so I would much rather we have a tape, again, if there are specific things, when we meet, I'd like to sit down then.
Okay. I'd love to sit down with you to talk in the future in regards to the ice hockey program. On that note, let everybody else speak, took up enough time. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I hope you consider making the right decision for the children. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not sure everybody's aware what the Monroe Woodbury hockey team has afforded a young female hockey player. My husband did mention a little bit about it, but I want you to understand the impact that this has had. Through the help and support of her coaches and her teammates, my daughter was able to break through the glass ceiling. She was afforded the opportunity to have a seat at a table with a male-dominated sport and contribute actively to the team and the sport itself. She is the first woman in Monroe Woodbury hockey history to score a goal for her team. By allowing her the opportunity to have a seat at that table and lean in, she has broken down a barrier with the support of her teammates and the coach. I implore you to reconsider your decision in abandoning the Monroe Woodbury hockey team. There are many female skaters on their way up to be allowed to have this opportunity. Please don't let my daughter be the only female in Monroe Woodbury hockey history to score a goal. Thank you.
My name is Tom Ertz. My son Ryan is a junior in the high school, and I would like to first thank everyone, Superintendent Rodriguez, the board, for an opportunity to speak with you this evening on the decision to eliminate the hockey program at Monroe Woodbury. I would also like to thank you all for your service to the community and our school system, and I understand that many times in the course of your duties, you have to make difficult decisions. But I respectfully ask you to reconsider the decision to eliminate our program. And I mean our program, because when you're a hockey family, it's personal, it's very personal. See, hockey just isn't a sport. It isn't an activity, it's a lifestyle. It's a way of life, it's not just an event. It creates a family experience that takes you on a journey that you never forget. It takes you places you never thought you'd go, experiences that you never thought you'd have, and for hockey families, a smell you'd never smell anywhere else. Enter into that picture, my son Ryan, right here in front of you, and his dream was to play hockey. When we moved to this great county in 2009, we could've gone anywhere, but we chose to live here, in the Monroe Woodbury system, because of the outstanding reputation of this school, and the excellence it provides, the activities it provided that no other school system did, and its great hockey program. You see, my son, even though he's a large young man here, was a bit of a late bloomer, in many ways like myself. Tall, lanky, awkward, growing into himself. But when he hit the ice at 10 years of age, it was love at first sight, and he never turned back. And his goal and his dream was to wear that Crusader uniform and skate in his senior year, leading his team out onto the ice. He's a junior. Taking this program away will eliminate that dream. He is one of two juniors here tonight. It's important to know that in my professional work, I am truly honored to serve as the vice president of ShopRite supermarkets. We employ 2,500 people in the county of Orange, over 50% of them are under the age of 23. I see firsthand the impact of programs that Monroe Woodbury has, like hockey, that really instills values, builds leadership skills, character, teaches them how to work in a team. I implore you to reconsider your decision to eliminate this program. Please do not take away the dream of my son, as he wants to stand on the shoulders of many of the other outstanding players and human beings you see here tonight, to continue the dream of Monroe Woodbury excellence in all that it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been asked to speak on behalf of the Monroe Woodbury varsity hockey team, as its future hangs in the balance. My name is Steve Pelosi, I'm an 18-year resident of Monroe, and a hockey coach for almost twice as long. I've been around and have coached dozens of the young men, the Donovan's, Mulligans, Martins, Morris, Murphy, McGee, Tumas, Mr. Tuma, Wakefield, to name a few. All have gone through the Monroe Woodbury School District and were part of the varsity hockey team. Most have gone on to college, and all are successful young men that have received an immeasurable value from being part of that team. To fully understand the value of the hockey program, I think you need to understand the typical young man or young lady that gravitates to the sport. They're the kid that can't sit still in class, or needs to have to bounce off a locker every once in a while, slide into a classroom on their knees just for the laugh. You're more likely to see them sitting outside the principal's office at North Main than in that classroom. Teachers with good intentions try everything in their arsenal to help, but that urge to move lives inside them. They're tagged with every imaginable affliction. Hockey is their outlet. The chaotic nature of each and every shift is calming to them, the physical nature of the sport satisfies that need for contact, and the discipline and hard work that it takes to play a game on skates at the speed with which it is played is rewarding. They become part of a special club. Many of their classmates can't do what they can do, and the structure around them, belonging to a hockey team, gives them a place where it's okay to be different. They're accepted for who they are, and they're not labeled. The big carrot hanging out there, for them, is someday wearing this jersey. As they progress through the early grades, smart teachers and counselors use the promise of one day being part of the team to their advantage. When they get to high school and they put this jersey on for the first time, they'll do whatever it takes to keep it on. Grades become important. Fitting into the fabric of that big high school matters to them. I've been told by a few smart educators, they figure it out. A large part of figuring it out has to do with the hockey team and the two men you have as coaches. If there's a bad day, they have somewhere to go. If there's an issue with the class, they get the help that they need. All the while, they're held to a high standard, respect for each other, their classmates, the school, and the game by their head coach. They wear that jersey with a greater sense of pride than they have any other jersey they have ever worn, growing up as kids. The program is not about wins and losses on the ring, it's about helping young men coming into the high school and giving them the tools it takes to be leave as responsible young men. The jersey I'm wearing belongs to my son Nicholas. He was one of those kids.
Just stop her.
He will graduate this year. He was the co-captain of the team and has been accepted to several colleges. I've had several parents of the younger players go out of their way to tell me how good Nick has been to their children. I know without the program, none of this would've, none of these achievements would've been possible. Excuse me. There have been countless other kids with similar stories. Those are the kind of wins that matter. Those are the kind of wins that I hope that matter to this board. I respectfully ask you to reconsider your decision, that I believe was hastily made, to end this program, and end the chance of that kind of win for kids of the future. I want to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. I implore you to take the time to contact me if you'd like. My number's at the bottom of this piece of paper, and I will hand it out to all of you. And I can go into more depth as to what this program means to kids. I've been around the game my entire life. Don't make it end here for the rest of the kids in this district.
Mary Pelosi?
Hi, my name is Nick Pelosi, I'm a senior of the Monroe Woodbury varsity team and a co-captain last season. I've been playing this sport for about 13 years, and I'm speaking on the behalf of the team, who are my teammates, and who I treat as my family, and who are just like my brothers and sisters. But if you're truly cutting this program, it's not an easy thing for these players to understand. You're basically taking their hearts out of their chest, because it's a game that they love and commit to all the time. I love it so much. So, please let my teammates continue to play, because all they do out there is give it everything they can, with hard work and dedication, even if we lose, that's all that matters. I'm proud to say that I love my team, and I'll miss them so much. Thank you.
If this was a movie, this would be the part where they take in on camera and they do a close-up, or John Lithgow and Kevin Bacon face off each other against each other in a movie like Footloose. And you would be portrayed as the enemy, and I'd be portrayed as the good guy. But that's simply not true, okay? You're not the enemy. I'm not the good guy. We're all a community. And it was because of that community that I decided to come home. In 1997, I left New York, I joined the Marine Corps, and for 20 years, that's where I served, and I was pulled away from this beloved state. Last year at this time, I came back looking for a place to bring my family. I went up and down the Hudson River, looking for places, looking for schools. Before we ever looked for a house, I walked through the doors of this school, Monroe Woodbury High School, and I met with the teachers. I took my son to tryouts at Ice Time Sports Complex, and Coach A came out and watched my son in the month of March, and said, "Come to Monroe Woodbury, we want your son on this team." So, I bought a house in your community, and I've made it my own, started coaching hockey teams here again. I've been asked to coach your modified team for the middle school for next year. You know, this isn't the first time this program's been attacked, I've done some research. Maybe "attack" is a little bit of a strong word, because once again, you're not the enemy, but that's what it feels like. In 2013, 2014, $80,000 was cut out of the school budgets affecting the middle school and this hockey team, cutting games out of their yearly schedule. And it has been a death by attrition, all across Section 9 athletics. Because I'm not just up here trying to defend the hockey team, I'm up here defending what athletics means. You see, athletics is the laboratory of character for young men and young women, and we've lost that in communities all across the United States. We've lost it to the point where we have to put up rules about how to behave in schools, when in reality, those lessons are taught each and every day, when these kids lace up their skates, when our football players put on their helmet, when our wrestlers put on their singlets and they enter the match. All the preparation that it took. I was an athlete growing up. I graduated 27 years ago. I can't tell you what the Pythagorean theorem is, I can't tell you about the Magna Carta, I don't remember. But I can tell you this, I remember singing my alma mater on the bus ride home after getting my head smashed in on a football game, and tell you what that feels like. I can tell you that when I was running across fields, the poppy fields in Afghanistan, getting shot at, what I heard in my mind, what I heard in my head was my Hawk White mic telling me, "Don't quit, keep going. Can't cut this program, not today." Who knows what the, in 27 years, what they're gonna be faced with, what challenges, what wars? Our development as a community, as a people, as human beings, comes from the contest of sports. And when you cut, you cut us all, you cut the community. You're not the enemy, you're my neighbor. I'm gonna see you at the store, I'm gonna see you on the streets, as friends and as a member of my community. Please understand what you're doing. Please understand the power and the responsibility that is on your shoulders at this moment, because if you do this, if you cut this, who knows what's gonna happen? They need this. They need this more now than ever before. Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to say thank you to everyone here for letting me speak in front of you today. I am a senior at Monroe Woodbury High School, I have played in this program for four years, and this is more, hockey at this school is more than just a sport, to me and to everyone that plays this sport. We're a family, and we stick together through everything. We've had tough losses that we know we shouldn't have lost, we've had wins that we barely scraped by, and we know we gotta stick together when we lose. I remember one game, we were losing, our coach Frank Alcindrino says, "As long as you guys stick together..." Our coach Frank Alcindrino says, "As long as you guys stick together, you guys will win this game." We go off for the third period, we win the game. This is more than a sport to everyone. I don't play any other sports. This is the only time I've had a chance to wear a school jersey and say, "I represent Monroe Woodbury Hockey as a program, as a school." Just because hockey takes up so much of your time. I play travel hockey too. I'd much rather play varsity hockey. We have to travel two or three hours for travel hockey just to play one game and come back home. We don't stay there overnight. We go there, we gun pack, we come back, we have another game the next morning, another two, three hours away. Varsity hockey is the only program that I know. We have consistent home games where we don't have to travel that far, we just travel to our home rink most of the time. And we enjoy each other's company. We have bus rides, we have in the locker rooms for practice. We enjoy each other's company, we're a family. We stick through each other on the ice, in the locker rooms, and in the classroom. It's different when you play travel hockey. You don't see the people in school, they all go to different schools, and it's different because they're your friends, but you don't see them in the classroom like, "Hey, what was the physics homework?" You know? I can't ask one of my friends that, they'll be like, "You're not in my school." These guys, if I miss something, they know. They're my family. I couldn't do, I couldn't have made it through high school without these guys. They've been through everything with me. This program means more than just the 20, 25 guys wearing jerseys tonight. I have a petition with almost 180 students that signed it. It's more, and I didn't even have the hockey team sign it, because I told them, "I want to show the superintendent and the Board of Education that it's more than just our kids that care about this sport. It's the other kids." Because they realize, you know, hockey means a lot to us. It's what we've given up half of our life, more than half of our lives, to dedicate so we could go on to do better things. This program has created so many opportunities for so many kids to go play college hockey, to go do other things outside of the classroom and inside the classroom at college, to pursue their dreams of playing college hockey and going to the college of their choice. And I'd just like to say thank you for letting me up here, and I hope you reconsider respectfully your decision to reinstate the varsity hockey team here.
Still tough going after you, you're like the champ over there. I want to thank everyone for having us, and I say this, my son's a first grader, and I don't have anyone on the hockey team, and I just, I'm someone who is a fan of hockey, and my son's starting to play now. As an educator, and I was a former varsity coach in Rockland County for soccer, I understand high-stakes education, and I understand Common Core and all the money that needs to go into Common Core, and the financial difficulties with the tax cap of what we have to go through. I know there are a lot of restrictions. With that being said, I'm also a parent with a lot of concerns when it comes to cutting programs, not only just hockey. Music, the arts, hockey, these are things that kids look forward to doing. They don't look forward to coming home and doing a Common Core work mat sheet, which my son dreads doing every night, but we get him to do it. My son suffers from anxiety. He was diagnosed when he was four years old. The district thankfully helped us with early intervention. And other professionals asked us to introduce him to new activities that were outside of his comfort zone, to adapt, to learn to manage his anxiety. We signed him up for floor hockey at the YMCA at four and a half years old, and he was befriended by a current member of your varsity team who was a seventh grader or middle schooler at the time. He's number 18 over there, Ryan Malekin. Ryan worked, you can clap for him, he's awesome. Ryan went out of his way and worked with my son and encouraged him to learn how to skate. His dad's the vice president of the Monroe Roller Hockey Program. He, it's very rare, I teach middle school, and it's very rare for a 12 or 13-year-old to have the character to work with a four-year-old, all right? And if he's learning that through hockey, then that's something that we shouldn't take away. It's a rare, special thing. I bring my son to school and the kids ignore him. So I don't know, you know, that's something that's rare for him. Since then, each time we see Ryan, my son at, when he's at roller hockey, he works with him, encourages him, he makes him feel like he's one of the cool older kids. As the year went on, my son's anxiety started to go from his face. He found a very safe and happy place. We encouraged him to try new things like ice hockey. This is also, I encourage my son to have things like work ethic. As parents, we constantly are able to use hockey as an example when things get tough or he doesn't feel confident or feels anxious. When he's having trouble reading or says he's not good at math, we remind him how hard he works at learning to skate and how to play hockey. And how if he takes practice, he can do these things better and better. The lessons he's learning through this sport go far beyond this rink. And believe, and we believe are helping him develop many ways in critical success as not just an athlete, but a student and an individual. And he's only six. We signed my son up for beginner hockey classes in Newburgh, and over the past year, we've attended several of the Crusaders' games. Ryan has gone out of his way to stop and speak with CJ and ask him about hockey in his uniform, which he thought was the coolest thing. At one game this year, my son asked if he would get to wear a uniform like Ryan and the big kids. I told him, "If you work hard in school and you practice and you are a good boy, hopefully you will someday." Now with this dismissal of this program, that dream may not become true. Again, as an educator and as a coach, I have seen cuts made and programs have such a tough time getting back. Anything like the arts, music, and sports being cut, I know it's tough to get it back. It's just the nature of the beast. I'm asking you, no, I'm pleading with you, to please rethink cutting any programs if we can save them. We can do things to try to encourage them, we can play the Rockland schools that are close by. Please look at these young men, but also think of CJ, that little six-year-old kid, because he has, he strives to be like Ryan and wear the Crusader shirt, the purple and gold, and purple and white, excuse me. But thank you so much.
Thank goodness I did not have to follow the Pelosi boy. My name is Mary Suntis, and I have three children who are students at Monroe Woodbury High School. I have a senior and two freshmen. My youngest freshman, Jack, is also a varsity hockey player. I am here this evening to share with you my reasons why you should not cut or replace the varsity hockey team. My son, Jack, when he found out that the team was being cut, his words were, "Monroe Woodbury doesn't want me or my team anymore." He spoke about not being a Crusader. So you see, hockey, for some of these players, actually the majority of them, is the only sport they have because of the demanding time that is needed to be good at this sport. So when there's no more hockey at Monroe Woodbury, there's no more student-athlete, and there's no more Crusader for Jack Suntis. Studies have shown, time and time again, that student-athletes do better academically. And the varsity hockey team has 11 scholar-athletes out of 21. Programs like varsity hockey at Monroe Woodbury make us unique, and that's what draws people here. Yes, our taxes are high, but everybody coming in is very aware of that and willing to sacrifice for their children and their futures. I have always supported and voted yes for the budget because I believe you get what you pay for. The varsity hockey team teaches our children about discipline, dedication, good mental health, and that is especially needed considering the heavy workload that our middle schoolers and high schoolers carry today. It also teaches them social skills, teamwork, leadership, which are all qualities that are needed as adults. It isn't just about cutting one program. It's talking about our children's future and opening Pandora's Box for other programs and services that are considered not needed. Maximizing student participation in a fiscally responsible manner is what was written in the email. We have 14, excuse me, we have 16 returning players with 10 of 25 to 30 modified players moving up. And that is not including students that will be attending tryouts. Our coaches are dedicated and love these players like their own. I would like to finish up by reading a text that was sent to Coach A from one of the players. "Hey, Coach, just heard about the news, and they have no right to take it away from us. This team, our coaches, are turning us up from boys to men, sacrificing their own time, coming out and helping us improve and get to where we want to go. And no matter what they say, you will always be my coach."
First, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tom Luddington. I'm a graduate of Monroe Woodbury, 1974. I've got three kids that have gone through the district and are on to bigger and better things, thanks to a lot of the experiences that they've had here. I consider them successful. I actually played on the first Monroe Woodbury team, not a varsity team, that ever competed against other schools in the 70s. We piled about eight or nine guys into cars during a gas crisis and went down to Sportorama and Rock Ice and all the local ones to step up and play against teams that had hockey programs throughout Rockland County, Westchester County, and New Jersey. That experience for us, for those 15, 20 guys to put on a jersey to represent their school was the most important experience, the most important thing that they had done. Many of them played other sports as well. We started out in the ponds, we worked our way into rinks, and we worked up and played that. A lot of those guys, some of those guys are here today. In fact, the coach of the Monroe Woodbury hockey team was an eighth grader when I was a senior and played on that team. And his dream was to come back and coach this team one day. We've got an alumni photo here. I don't know how many teams play alumni games. Here's about 40 guys ranging over four decades that come back and play. We heard a lot about hockey players and how they're different and their things that they do, very unique that no one else does. They skate. For some reason, there's an attraction to putting on blaze and getting on frozen water and skating around. And they continue to come and do that. Two Monroe Woodbury graduates faced off this last weekend for the New York City Police Department against FDNY in Brooklyn. These are just two of the kids that have gone on and moved on to other things. Ice hockey can be a lonely sport. We heard a lot of today, it's a family. We are a family. We're kind of nomads, we're kind of like an underground group of athletes that people don't even know exists because they do have to travel. There's not a rink in our town like there are in some upstate. So these people do go, and they put on jerseys, and they pay money to play in these different, in these different programs. But when they come back, again, and put on the jersey with their friends, we heard it from these guys today, to sit there with your friends and play on the same team for your school is probably the most important aspect of their hockey career to date, to be able to do that. Mr. Pelosi said, "All the other jerseys, we all have probably 10 jerseys in our garages or more of teams that our kids have played on. But the one they want to put on most is the Monroe Woodbury purple and white jersey. That's the one they want to play with." We talk about modified, there is no modified program for the school. The modified program's been around for many, many years here, and it's basically the, you know, junior high kids, the parents get together, bring them together, some are travel players, some are not, all right? Here's a picture from about seven years ago on here. Some of these kids, most of these kids continue to play through high school. Five of them are now playing D1 club hockey in schools like Drexel, University of Delaware. And there's actually three of them that played here in Monroe Woodbury. They were the captains of their teams that are playing together at Oswego State. Those are the kids that kept, you know, keep playing, and they'll play after college as well. But go back to the modified, go back to what you see there. Some of the kids didn't skate all that well. But hockey is a sport where we come together, we pick each other up, we help that kid play because you know, yeah, the numbers might be dwindling. And that's kind of unique here. 10, 15 years ago, when Monroe Woodbury won a state championship, they would cut 10, 15 kids. Those kids would go to other schools in Orange County and play for the club teams. And they were good, and they got cut from here. Yeah, the numbers are dwindling, but you see some interesting things that happen there. You see kids that may have not made the hockey team years ago that are playing hockey today. And you see the team building character and surrounding themselves, the kids around those players, picking them up, teaching them tips, letting them score. I've seen games, if you've come down and watched them set a guy up in front of the net and say, "We're going to get you a goal today. Just stay there, keep your stick on the ice, and we're going to bounce it off you into the net if we have to." But this is what hockey players, and this is what the hockey family does.
Mr. Luddington?
Yes.
I apologize for cutting you off. We have a three-minute time limit.
Okay.
We've given you some leeway as with...
Thank you very much for that. I think one of the most important parts here that I'd like to say, that we've heard some great things today from this group. A testament is here that the young kids that look up at the banner that sits up in Ice Time right now, the 2007 championship team, they aspire to become Monroe Woodbury Crusaders. It inspires the kids that play that day on that rink to say, "This could happen. I can dream, we can win a championship." Taking this away, you take away their aspirations, you take away their love of the game, their love of their school, and the love to put that jersey on.
May I ask questions as well?
No.
No. Okay. Well...
Well, let me rephrase that. You can ask questions, but we're not, at this time, we're not answering them?
Okay. So I guess a few comments. I don't have kind of the same emotional appeal. I guess my understanding, however, is that a lot of this decision was based on comparisons to other Orange County districts. I guess I question why that would be a basis when most of the other districts are much smaller than Monroe Woodbury, when we look at other comparable districts in the area that are just as regional. In Rockland County, for example, all those schools continue to maintain hockey programs. So I guess I'd be curious to understand, you know, subsequently what the basis was for that. Just in general, you know, hockey is a growth sport. So I'm not looking to be negative towards any of the other sports because I agree with the comments that athletics are a key element in developing these young people to be better adults. However, I would just like to comment that hockey is the one, is only one of only two youth sports that has experienced over the last decade significant growth. So we may have some challenges here, but the overall market for hockey is growing. That is not the case for any other youth sport program. So you're targeting a program that is in an area where people have more and more interest. And New York State is also a very, very hockey-friendly state. We have the third highest participation in hockey of all states in the country. Even when you adjust for population, we're a very, very engaged state in youth hockey. And I guess my final comment and question is, there was, to me, a lack of transparency in the process. We received a notification that was being eliminated. I think if you see that, obviously from the crowd here and from some of the comments, you have a very engaged group of parents and families. I don't understand why, if there was a difficult decision to be made, which you all can certainly respect, why wasn't that made more transparent so that we could assist in coming up with a solution to the problem, if it's a financial problem or a budget problem? So again, I'm a finance person. I face the same difficult challenges in the businesses I've worked in, so that's understandable. But when, in my experience, it works better when you have a transparent process, when you engage the other stakeholders to try to solve an issue that you have. And I guess I'm just curious also, with that being said, I have no idea what the dollar savings or what the goal was here, so we don't even know what we're up against in some way. So I guess that's my commentary.
Yuri Dovgan?
English not my first language, so I have accent.
It's okay.
Try and understand me. My kid, I have three kids went through Monroe Woodbury. My kid, I have three kids who went through Monroe Woodbury. First one already been out in 2013, two still in school. My son, who is finishing seventh grade, he's playing hockey since he was almost five. So, every time when he was mite, he was five, six, we was going to the games, 5 o'clock in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, we was talking, right? And I was telling him his plan, his plan on the future, right? So, you're playing hockey now, you're good in the school, you play higher level, and one day you will play for your school. That's why when I come into the United States, I come into Monroe, right? So, I always know it's hockey team here. So, when coming time, and my son, who's sitting there with his friends, who is about seventh, eighth grade, and who is ready to move to the team next year, like practice or so, they got this part of future cut off. It was planned, was good in the school, school team, college team. You have busy, you're not going outside, you're not out on the streets, you're busy three times a week, practice, two games during the weekend, pretty busy. I invest a lot of time, money, and effort to grow the hockey player, like all parents here. They all know what I'm talking about. So, now, when I found this in the emails, my friends just passed this email, I was real upset. And when my son coming from the school, he was upset, more than me, you know? Last year, we bought house in this area, we bought house in Harman. So, when coming question, where are we going to buy, we pay more money to get to Monroe School District because of hockey too, right? Now, part of my son's future just disappeared. And not only my son, over there, you see, kids who not have this privilege, have this jersey on, but they ready to put on. They're ready to come to the team. They stay over there. Younger kids who are right now in the seventh grade, sixth grade, eighth grade, you cut this future from them, you know? And I believe it's not fair. I believe we pay very high taxes in this area. I just figure out, my house not big, not new, but I paid over $12,000, and bigger part is school tax. I want to have future for my son for this money too, not only for money, for those effort, time, and, or, you know, let's say, family effort. It's not only me. You know, I'm truck driver, my wife are in in the hospital. So, we've got to try to real hard to put three times a week practice. And every weekend, Saturday and Sunday, we travel to there. Philadelphia, to the Connecticut, Massachusetts, and it's a lot of money too. We invest in thousands and thousands of dollars. We not bring you kids who don't have idea how to play hockey. We bring you ready players to school team. All guys who sitting there, they coming to the team as a ready player. You don't have, teach them how play hockey. You got to just do details. So, let's say soccer team what you have, or other sport what you have on the school district, you got to teach kids from very little till very old. These guys start playing in a high school.
Mr. Dovgan? Again, I apologize for cutting you off. I appreciate the comments.
Thank you, board. And I hope you're going to make a decision in interest of kids.
Tony Cardone?
You can hear me.
Tony?
Thank you, board, for your commitment to the community and for allowing us to speak this evening. I want to make it clear that I am not here as a politician. I'm here as a 1979 proud alumnus of Monroe Woodbury, who is very disheartened by the choice that we see before us. I did not have the opportunity to play at Monroe, and I'm glad that Mr. Luddington is the oldest alumnus that has spoken so far. So, thank you for that, Tommy. There was a little break in the program from when it was begun. And the reason it started was, Coach Bexardi used to have a table hockey club after school in his classroom. And in the early 80s, a couple of the kids came to him and said, "Let's start a program," which was begun at that time. I could see you wanting to cut the program if you're cutting it because Coach A's name is lefty and he has mob connections. I understand that. But I don't, I don't feel it's justified. I really don't. I think this evening, I'm going to cut to the chase because a lot of people spoke on a lot of aspects I was going to speak about. I think it should be to create ideas on how to save and maintain the program. It's a program with a lot of legacy, and programs at Monroe Woodbury shouldn't be given a death sentence. They should be given life support and care and attention so that they continue, regardless of whether it's hockey, any other sport, or any other program. There are alternatives, and that's evident by the high attendance here this evening. And all everyone is asking is to create some dialogue amongst the players, their parents, and the coaching staff on how to create an idea to keep the program instead of slashing it. In some minute way, all of us are educators in our own way, and we need to act like such instead of becoming Gordon Gekkos. We all need to focus on educating each other because it's not always about the dollar. It's about the sense, it's about the common sense. And the common sense is to keep this program. Whether you cut some of the dollars out or whether you find another alternative, this program has to stay at Monroe Woodbury. I have to liken Mackenzie Schroder, who I've known since she was a little girl, to that girl on Wall Street who's staring down the bull, okay? Give her the opportunity, give her the opportunity to continue staring down that bull and give other females and males the opportunity to play in this program. I did not have that opportunity. I did go on and play in college, and I was sorry I did not have the opportunity to play in high school. Thank you very much for listening. We appreciate your time. Sorry, real quick. I want to thank that gentleman right there for his passion in coming up here. And I also want to thank him for his service to our country and community. And I want to let you know, if you read Rule Three, "We will try to include students who are left out." Let's not leave them out, please.
Members of the board, thank you for letting me speak in front of you. I am different than the rest of the people here. I do not have a child in your district. I am not even from Monroe Woodbury district. I got an email from a girl who played on the U.S. Olympic team, asking me to be here to support Monroe Woodbury. Both of my kids, my son and my daughter, both played ice hockey. My daughter played from when she was four until she was 18. She turned and volunteered when she was in high school. She volunteered teaching hockey to kids with autism and with Down Syndrome. She got offers to play in college. She decided she wanted to be a surgeon at the last minute. She went on to college, said she wasn't going to play. When she graduated college, she went back to her calling. She's now down at STACK, getting her master's degree. She's gone away from being a surgeon to be now a teacher of kids with autism. That's her special education and thing. She just signed a deal to do her student teaching in Los Angeles and work with kids who are nonverbal. So, my daughter got her dream because of hockey. That's what started it. My son played hockey all the way from age two all the way up until currently. My son turned, was very, got a lot of scholarship offers. The one thing he took, he took Brown University. He plays for Brown University right now. That's a school that his SAT scores and his grades would never have got him into if it wasn't for hockey. So, he is there, he is playing, he's going to school. And Brown is not a hockey school. We're Division One, but we're number 59 out of 60. We're one of the worst teams in the country. But to him, it was all about education. And a lot of that's the coaching that he had that brought this out to him and basically said, "Listen, you're going to have to have a future after this, and maybe hockey will help you get there. And that's what you need to do." You in the district here had a girl who played in the district. She moved away, the family moved away, the husband got transferred or whatever. But she got her start in Monroe Woodbury. Her name is Paige Savage. She played here. She put on a USA uniform and played for the United States in Europe, you know? You have these people here. A lot of people in this country, get away from hockey. Look at sports people. Everybody looks, and I'm not a Yankee fan, but they look at Derek Jeter and say, "Derek Jeter is the guy that you say is a role model for your kid. You say, 'He is a kid who did the right thing.'" Well, I can go and take all these guys in the NHL, I'll give you 300 Derek Jeters because there's so many of them out there that are just like that. You don't see hockey players getting arrested. You don't see domestic violence in this. These are, this is a sport you want your kids to turn and learn and be part of, you know? Do the right thing here, you know? Find a way to make this work. Because, listen, you may not, you may have another Derek Jeter out here. You may have a kid here that's got a shot at the Olympics, and you may be cutting his legs out right now. You may be taking his dreams away from him. So, I hope you do the right thing.
My name's Matt Sarkis. I'm a lifelong area resident. I've lived here for 38-plus years since my family moved here when I was about five. I'm a 1991 graduate of Monroe Woodbury. I'm a four-year letterman and I'm a former captain of the Monroe Woodbury Ice Hockey Team, and I did have the opportunity and privilege to be coached by then assistant coach Frank Aliceandrino many years ago for two of the four years that I competed. For those of us that were on the team during that period of time, it was a fledgling program to the point that there was such a dearth of ice available. We used to actually practice on Wednesday nights at 9:00 at night outdoors at Bear Mountain. It'd be so cold, you'd have to tape up the ear holes in your helmet, wear a kerchief, go in and out to stay warm, to keep from getting frostbite. And it sort of speaks to the passion that we even as young kids and teenagers back then had. For those of us that were a part of that, to see that 16 years later, when Monroe Woodbury became only the second school south of Albany to capture a state championship in ice hockey, it just seems counterintuitive for me to be standing here and to think that less than 10 years after that, we're going to go from being state champions to not having a team at all. One of the other things that I think I could speak intelligently about is the idea, the notion, that there's a loss of interest in the sport. I continue to make hockey a part of my life. I coach with the hockey director of Ice Time, which is the main travel hockey rink out of this county. And I've had the opportunity to coach, learn to skate, learn to play, mites, and now squirts, which encompasses pretty much the kids from 10 and under. Not only are the numbers higher than any other program throughout Rockland or Westchester as far as youth hockey, but the most significant number of kids that we have reside within the confines of the Monroe Woodbury School District. So, all of these kids, that some of whom I have coached, are sitting in this room, are in this district in part because they want the opportunity, like they said, to wear the jerseys that these gentlemen and ladies seated to my right are wearing. One of the coaches, actually, one of the players that I coach, ironically enough, a couple of days before, Coach Aliceandrino told me what was going on, was picking my brain for two days. He actually teaches in Washingtonville. He resides in Rock Hill. His son plays on my team. And he was picking my brain because he was looking at homes in the town of Monroe, in Woodbury, in the village of Harriman, in large part because he wanted to reside in a district that has a varsity ice hockey program. Not only is Monroe Woodbury the only one in Orange County, it's the only one in Orange, Ulster, Sullivan, Green, pretty much anywhere south of Albany until you get to Rockland County on this side of the river. We are the only varsity ice hockey program, and I think that's an amenity that you're sort of underestimating how interwoven into the fabric of this community that hockey actually is. And I'll end because I don't think there's been enough said about the man that heads the program, which is Frank Aliceandrino. You can talk a lot about wins and losses and state championships, and that's great. But the one indelible memory I have of Coach Aliceandrino is that in the bus rides to and from practice, he would be checking with the teachers during the day, and some of the guys maybe weren't keeping up with their grades. And they would be seated up at the front of the bus with him on the way to practice and on the way home by flashlight sometimes because he was making sure that they were doing their homework and that they were going to make the grade. That's what hockey's about. That's what Coach Aliceandrino is about, and that's what you're going to lose if you just continue this ice hockey program.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Claire Duffy. I have four children in the district ranging from grade three to grade eight. My children have all at one time or another played hockey, including my third-grade daughter. I was very disappointed when I learned that the school district was cutting the varsity hockey program for the 2017-18 school year. My family was really looking forward to being a part of this program in the coming years. I spoke with someone about the decision-making process and was told that when you take the emotion out of it and just look at the facts, the decision to eliminate the program is clear. This person said that most, if not all of the kids on the hockey team will still have the chance to play hockey on their club or travel teams. While this may be true, there is something wonderful about being able to play for your school and your community. The players at the middle school level and the elementary school level play in different programs throughout our area. Only on our high school team do these players come together to play as a community and to represent our school district. Some of these kids have the goal of playing hockey in junior programs or at the college level. But for most of these kids, playing hockey for Monroe Woodbury will be their only opportunity to represent their schools and to ultimately learn about the pride and the responsibility that comes with that. Monroe Woodbury has a well-established ice hockey program, which has provided many playing opportunities for countless kids over the last 30-plus years. The letter sent by Ms. Rodriguez cited travel to play other teams outside our region as a concern. But when I looked at the schedule for this past season, 12 of the games were played within our county at Ice Time in Newburgh or at Bear Mountain. The remaining five games were played at rinks within an hour drive of our school, with the exception of one game. Finding teams to play, although outside our section but within our region, does not seem to be the issue and therefore should not be a consideration when making the decision about our program. The varsity hockey program has many great things going for it, but one of the greatest things about our hockey program is that there is a girl who plays for it. This year, Mackenzie Schroder was the first female to score in a varsity game. I have a young daughter who thinks it's the coolest thing that Mackenzie plays hockey and that she scored. One of my daughter's best days this winter was skating on the lake with this young woman and some of her teammates. It is my hope that she and all of the other girls in our community, and there are a lot of them, will be able to continue to play at the varsity level. I did not think I was going to get choked up. The girls will not have the same opportunity if the varsity program is eliminated. The facts are, the program provides opportunities for student athletes in our community to represent their school and to be a part of something bigger than themselves. Girls have the opportunity to play, to do well, and to even excel in this sport as Mackenzie did this year. The games were played within our region and our county. I urge you to reconsider your decision about the ice hockey program. For over 30 years, the funds have been found to keep the program going. Please take another look and see if there is any way to keep this program alive. I understand that there are new programs that are being developed that have the potential to reach a number of children and provide different opportunities. I think that is wonderful, and I'm excited to see what happens there, but I don't think it needs to be an either-or situation. I urge the board and the Monroe Woodbury administration to reconsider their decision.
Jake Shackman?
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Jake. I'm currently a senior enrolled here at Monroe Woodbury High School. Additionally, I'm the captain of our team. I have a few concerns regarding the future of our program that I'd like to share with you guys tonight. But before I begin, I want to apologize for any emotions that any of us have shown. It's been a difficult experience for all of us. Now, put yourself in my shoes for one minute. I'm a size ten, by the way. No, seriously. Uh, looking back in middle school, my dream was to play varsity hockey at our high school. I attended multiple games, high-fiving all the players, and envisioning myself playing alongside these role models. Oddly enough, these young men are still my role models today in other ways, on and off the ice. Upon arrival at my high school, we were all overwhelmed but told to get involved and have a good time. Once November rolled around, it was time for hockey season, and we all knew why it was so great to be in high school. High school can be a stressful, social, intellectual, physical, and emotional time for a student. Finding your calling is vital to success in our school, and for me, it was this team. Finally, it was my turn to play for the team. I met, I felt the emotion, energy, and pride of what it means to be a Crusader. Pulling on that jersey meant a lot more to me than just playing some old hockey game. I achieved my goal. I did it. I made the team. And taking my first steps on the ice my freshman year, the feeling I will never forget, my parents in attendance supporting me and the rest of the team. It was quite honestly one of the best moments of my life, but I quickly realized my work is not done. I had more to do. Achieving the goal of making the team was wonderful, but I wanted to be a contributor to this team. Hockey taught me lessons that I probably never would have had learned. The privilege and experience of playing hockey is unlike any other. The camaraderie among my teammates is something that I'll never be able, no one will ever be able to remove from me or relate to. Within the blink of an eye, I'm watching the score clock tick away, the last few seconds of my high school hockey career, and taking off that Crusader jersey one last time. I'm not here to ask you guys for the seconds back, but to avoid the elimination of our phenomenal program that made those experiences possible for me. These guys and, and girl are just like me, dreaming of playing one day at Monroe Woodbury for varsity hockey. Last night, I had to give a speech similar to this one at our team banquet, and immediately after it hit me, this whole year of last, which was my senior year, was also our program senior year. The underclassmen working so diligently now are losing their senior night and all those memorable moments and experiences that I got to experience which lie ahead for them. Looking back on the memories I created were some of the best, and I can never forget any of them, and none of them would have been possible without this team. Actually, this family. These guys are my brothers, and I wouldn't trade them for the world, well, and sister. And it hurts to watch my brothers and sister in, and in this much pain. In particular, our coaches. These guys put in countless hours of time and energy to make us successful. Their first practice with this team was also my first practice my freshman year. This, these men had to grow with us together. Uh, these men made every last effort to ensure our success. I ask the most respectful manner, uh, that you don't, you don't make it all for naught. Please reconsider, not for me, but for the coaches who put in the countless hours, the players who feel the sense of belonging in that Crusader jersey, and role models to the younger hockey players in the area, and of course, the parents who I'm lucky enough to know most. Imagine observing your child in this much pain, or a brother or sister for that matter. I cannot speak for the coaches or the booster representatives about our political or economical situation due to lack of knowledge and time to prepare. But at the end of the day, we are humans and have emotions. Please do the right thing. Thank you guys so much for your time.
I want to thank the players and their families for coming out, uh, from the hockey community to show their pride and their passion, uh, for their sport. If members, uh, representatives from the hockey team, uh, can contact, uh, Ms. Rodriguez to set up a time to sit down and discuss the future of hockey in Monroe Woodbury, uh, that would be fantastic. Uh, we're gonna shift gears here and, uh, turn our attention to questions and comments from our CSEA members.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Monroe Woodbury School Bus Drivers. We at Monroe Woodbury Transportation are community members. We are your neighbors, your friends, and your family. Therefore, we care for each of your children as our own. Most of us have children in these very schools, either past or present. We are hardworking and committed. We have chosen this career for the many rewards despite the sacrifices it entails. We rise before our households. We pick up high school students in the dark predawn hours. We are responsible for fifty to sixty-plus children on each run. Many of us work and drive seven hours per day, safely transporting over a hundred and fifty students. We are caring. We are much more than just operators of many types and sizes of vehicles. We strive to get to know our students. We nurture, protect, intervene in bullying, and comfort any child in distress. We care for children with special needs, helping them adapt and assisting faculty in readying them for their school day. This is all done while safely operating our vehicles through traffic, road, and weather conditions. We are unselfish. Many of us sacrifice family or social events in order to get the required amount of sleep to effectively perform the next day. All of our worries, stresses, or illnesses must be set aside so the enormous responsibilities of our job can be first and foremost. Anyone who feels that this constitutes a part-time job should drive a mile behind our wheel. We are a caring, generous group of community members tirelessly fundraising for needy families and our own coworkers. We earn our livings, spend our earnings, and we pay our taxes here. We are concerned, as a large group of taxpayers in this district, we vote in all election matters vital to the growth and well-being of our community. We fight for our children's welfare and the good of our livelihood. We watch in dismay as more outside vehicles are contracted to pick up our children. We helplessly watch as talented, caring drivers retire early in the fear of losing their retirement benefits. We are frustrated by the lack of hiring of new drivers to join us as we feel that only Monroe Woodbury drivers care for your children to the degree that they deserve. We know that these children will thrive under our patience, diligence, and kindness. Our voices must be heard in any and all future voting matters. When you see Monroe Woodbury on the side of any vehicle, know that the person driving is proud to be working for your family. We humbly request your support as we struggle to remain the elite, safe, and nurturing transportation department you have counted on for many years. We must all fight for the future well-being of our children in district. Let our voices be loud to board members and administrators. Even in trying times, the erosion of our transportation department is not the way to balance a budget.
Thank you, thank you, board, for hearing us out, uh, guys. Uh, my name is Jack Rallo. I am a Monroe Woodbury taxpayer and a proud parent of two children who graduated top twenty-five in this excellent school district. I am a CSEA member and part of the illustrious Building and Grounds Department here at MW. I have been in the building construction business for over thirty years. I know, it sounds like a long time. One thing stands true for all good building projects. These projects begin with good, strong foundations. Without a strong foundation, a building will not stand the test of time. Here at Monroe Woodbury, we have stood the test of time for many years. This is because we have a strong foundation. We have wonderful teachers, administrators, support staff who care for our children, educate them, and provide them with the self-esteem and confidence that is unrivaled in many districts. We have great employees that provide our children with safety and security, delicious lunches and breakfasts, nursing care, sports, clubs, music, and just about anything our kids could ask for. We have a school board that cares for our children, employees, and MW taxpayer as well. This is the wonderful project we have built here at Monroe Woodbury. But, let's not forget that our strong foundation also has to have the mortar to hold it together. These are your CSEA members. Your bus drivers who pick up our children, who drive them to and from school every day, to and from every sporting event and competition that you can dream of. Making sure they are safe and secure. Let's not forget the bus mechanics who toil night and day, making sure that these buses are able to run continuously and safely. Let's not forget the dispatchers and people behind the scenes that make sure everything is running correctly. Let's not forget the custodians who day after day are the first ones to the building to make sure everything is in working condition and to handle any situation. The head custodians are the first ones called to the building if something goes wrong. The night custodians who clean the entire building, making sure they're able to open the next morning in a safe and cleanly manner. They are the same custodians that you see working every weekend so the sports clubs, so the sports and clubs can use these buildings. Let's not forget the grounds department who maintain all our fields our sports team play on every day. They mow, landscape, and manicure hundreds of acres. They also maintain and repair hundreds of pieces of equipment every year. And lastly, let's not forget my favorite group of CSEA members, the maintenance department. Our department maintains all thirteen buildings in our district. We maintain and repair thousands of doors and hardware. We maintain and repair tens of thousands of lighting fixtures, outlets, switches, breaker panels. We have built thousands of desks, cabinets, shelves, and walls. We repair and maintain thousands of sinks, faucets, and toilets. We unclog sewers. We clean out grease straps. We maintain and repair thousands of feet of water lines and dozens of water heaters. We maintain and repair thirty hot water and steam boilers, about the size of a car. District-wide, almost five hundred unit ventilators, thousands of feet of baseboard heat, hundreds of fan coil heaters, thousands of pumps and motors, multiple condensate tanks, a seven-hundred-ton chiller system at the high school, a fifty-five-ton chiller system at the middle school, and approximately one hundred separate air conditioning systems. These are the guys you also see doing major projects during the summer, winter, and spring breaks. And let's not forget that our CSEA members are the first ones out in the storm. Snow plowing, salting, shoveling sidewalks, cleaning snow off of buses to make sure that school can open.
Uh, Mr. Rallo.
I, I understand. One more thing. Also, the CSEA members are also a vital part of the energy conservation program, which I know you're all a fan of, because I am too. Adjusting temperatures for shutdowns, turning off lighting, other electrical equipment, filters, checks, building checks. Our CSEA members are the cement that holds all the pieces of our great puzzle together. I hope that you can see your way to giving these vital members of our community a fair contract.
Sue Manaties.
Good evening. My name is Sue. I'm a concerned taxpayer and bus driver here at Monroe Woodbury. I am here tonight to ask the board to consider returning summer bus cleaning to the transportation budget. Approximately four years ago, the district cut out summer bus cleaning from the budget. Some of you may not realize exactly how important it is to make sure these very expensive vehicles are kept clean. Just like the summer classroom cleaning, these buses also require a floor-to-ceiling cleaning. This was done by a team of drivers over a period of five weeks. When the new school year started, the drivers and students felt great getting into a clean, sanitized bus. They respected us and their bus. During the school year, each driver is responsible to sweep the bus and keep it clutter-free. Aesthetically, this is great. However, these buses see over a hundred fifty, um, children a day. They are driven thousands of miles during the year and accumulate lots of diesel buildup on the rails and ceiling along with children stuffing food, gum, candy, and wrappers of all sorts in the seats. This doesn't include the children who are sick from viruses or flus. This becomes a health issue as the bacteria, if not cleansed, will be carried on, on, off the bus with other children and spread into the schools. Our buses are our classrooms, so to speak. We should not allow years to go by without maintaining these fifty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar vehicles. We take great pride in being the best transportation department in the nation. We are second to none. Let's continue to be proud of who we are and what we do. We owe it to the taxpayers of the community to take care of these investments. I have pictures of some of the seats I lifted to show the accumulated debris. Please consider returning this important program back to the transportation department. Help keep our kids not only safe, but healthy.
I'm James Horn. I am the lead custodian of Sapphire, Harriman Center, MCC, and the dorm behind us, which really nothing going on in there. I'm here to talk about, uh, responsibility that we have as head custodians. We are given a phone that we have to have on twenty-four hours a day. I am answering calls at one, two o'clock in the morning, twenty-four hours a day. People are calling me. The alarm's going off, this is going off. At night, I get calls from different custodians. I feel at this time we should be compensated for carrying the phone twenty-four hours a day. Also, the maintenance guys also carry the, the school cell phone twenty-four hours a day. We have to be contacted at all times. I just feel that we should be compensated for our time that we use. I was in the military for over eleven years. I was a battalion motor sergeant before I left. We were the backbone of the army, and the CSEA employees are the backbone of the school districts. I just ask for some respect and a fair contract. Thank you so much.
Stephanie Thomas.
Hi, and thank you for letting me speak. I've lived in this district for twenty-four years. I've had three daughters go through this district. One of them graduated eleventh in her class. They're all doing very well, so I take pride in my job and having my children go through here. So I'm just gonna read to you what they've given me here. I ask you to look at what was, what has changed from the past until now. This bargain unit has negotiated with the district in good faith for decades. We have always come to an agreement between the district and the union. We have never had to involve third party. So what has changed? The district this time around is paying an attorney to sit at the table and negotiate this contract. Not only our contract, but also the teachers, the administrators, as well as the support staff. How much of our taxpayer dollars are going to this law firm to negotiate these contracts? Is this penny wise or pound foolish? For the past eighteen months, the district has paid over a hundred thousand dollars to these attorneys. The job of the administration of this district is to negotiate contracts. Why aren't they doing their jobs? Instead, they hire attorneys to negotiate a contract, and their only interest is the almighty dollar. At least when the union committee sits down at the table, they have a vested interest in this community and the county as a taxpayer.
Good evening. My name is Kim Coomey, and I am a Monroe Woodbury taxpayer. I and the three other members of my family always vote yes for the school budget and yes for the referendum for new school buses. I've had an opportunity to look at the last two school budgets, and I have questions on how the purchase of school buses are funded. In the budget ending June twenty sixteen, over a million dollars was budgeted for buses, but only six hundred and three thousand was expended, leaving four hundred and eighteen thousand unexpended. In the budget ending June twenty fifteen, a total of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand was budgeted for the purchase of school buses, but not a single cent of this was expended. As a proud school bus driver for the district, I know that new buses were purchased in each of those years, and I am also now how important it is that we keep our fleet updated and getting new, by getting new buses each year. However, this makes me wonder, if there was money elsewhere in the budget to cover the cost of new buses, why were, why were referendums put up for the taxpayers to approve? What has happened to the unexpended funds? Have the unexpended funds been used to reduce the taxpayers' burden? I look forward to your response. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I want to thank the CSEA for coming out this evening. Please know that the board is listening. At this point, we're going to move to items. What, after, did you want to do the agenda? Item six on the agenda, the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this moment, we will take a short break. I know there are some students for the government class that need items signed. They could come on up, so about five minutes or so. Thank you. All right, we are back in session. Absolutely no board business was discussed during the break. Moving on to item number seven, first reading of policy manual. Chris.
We are adding a line item or a language in policy number 3160. Students and staff will be advised that the use of the district computer network are required to be in accordance with law and application of collective bargaining agreements. In the case that a violation of law may constitute a criminal offense, the superintendent of schools or his designated will report the offense to the appropriate authorities. So we're just adding that clarification to that policy for the first reading. And we have, are we adding another policy? I don't, I can't get on to my.
5659, charging school meals.
Meals. Yeah, meals. I can't get on my thing, sorry.
Here.
Do you want to, Chris? Chris?
I'm not going to read the whole entire thing, but it's, I haven't read it. It's policy 5659. It's a policy that we worked on yesterday for two hours, charging school meals. So it's there. It's a long one. It's just about people that, it's about how we can recoup and reimburse monies for students that are delinquent in their payment of meals and what we do going forward to get the money back and what we do to those students that don't have lunch. We also are discussing in our meeting a health and wellness policies and a meal policy, which we've been discussing. A lot of our students in the one that we put forth tonight, there are like delinquency things. And I think that the community and the district, they need to know that we have free and reduced lunch. And again, I'd like to just bring to the public that free and reduced lunch is confidential. A lot of our students are eligible, but they just don't apply. So we're getting into situations where students are coming to lunch, they're out of money, and then because they can't afford it in the first place, they don't have money for lunch, and we're trying to give them something nutritional to eat where if they had the free and reduced lunch, they would be able to get a real nutritious meal instead of something we kind of are providing for them as a courtesy, which we don't really have to do. So I want to reiterate that free and reduced is important. There's a lot of people that are eligible for it. It's confidential. No one knows if you're on it. You should really, if you know someone you think might qualify, please, you know, ask them to fill it out at their, you know, their school. There's other things that come with free and reduced. We said it about two meetings ago.
Correct.
There's SAT, ACT, all those types of testing that you get waived, the fees. There's college applications that get waived. So there's a lot more than just, you know, a free sandwich here involved. There's a lot more to it. We're trying to work on getting that out there. But once again, the, the community needs to know again about free and reduced. Other than that, we're working on these other policies that are taking a little bit longer than we thought because they're more detailed than we thought.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, the review of Budget Book Two and Three with Dr. Hassler, Patrick Cahill, Mr. Ullau, Ms. Jordan, and Ms. Shepherdley.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening. We continue our budget development process this evening. Tonight, we're going to be discussing our pupil personnel services budget, including our special education budget. We're also going to be presenting Books Two, which includes our core instructional programs such as mathematics, language arts, science, and social studies, our district-wide instructional programs. Music and art would be examples of that. We're also going to be dealing with Book Three, which includes instructional, educational support budgets, central office budget, undistributed district-wide budget categories such as debt service, and the BOSI's administrative and capital budgets. I just want to thank all the folks involved in putting this together, the principals, the directors, coordinators, chairpersons. It's a, it's a team effort. It's a group effort. We've had a lot going on lately this year, and it feels like everyone has risen to the occasion to, to get the budget completed. Again, this is a snapshot. It's our budget as of this point in time. State aid numbers are not in, and as I've mentioned in previous meetings, it's about 30% of our revenue budget, so things can change. And things have changed even from the budget reports that we gave to the board and uploaded to Board Docs on Friday to today. So there's been some minor changes there. We have our meeting on Tuesday, which is pretty, pretty close, right around the corner, where we're going to have the superintendent's recommendation and the staffing, the personnel portion of the budget on the same night. And hopefully, we'll have everything, I don't want to say hopefully, we will have everything pulled together by Tuesday. Finally, I just wanted to point out to the board, I've distributed a couple of brief reports this evening. They basically have a breakdown of the program codes that we use in our, in our budget system. And the other report actually shows the, the responsible party for that particular program code. The program code is the last four digits of the budget code, and so we've presented a lot of this, and your reports that you've received are in a program code order. We also have generated reports in a function code order. The function code is the first four digits of a budget code. I call this the anatomy of a budget code. And the function code is a statewide system. It's a uniform system of accounts. Our program codes are unique to Monroe Woodbury, so you can have reports sorted in different ways. The data is the same, the results are the same, just may look a little different. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Alethea Shepherdley, Mr. Eric Ullau, and Mrs. Karen Jordan, who will present the PPS and special education budgets.
A copy of the presentation is in your stack of materials for this evening.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Board Clerk, and Superintendent Rodriguez. Tonight, we are here to present our budget for the 1718 school year. Last year, if you recall, we gave you the history of how special education came to be and reflected on the reasons for how services began by talking about the Willoper Decree, the 94th Congress where IDEA was passed, and of course, ultimately, Part 200 of the New York State Regulations. This year, we thought it'd be wise to share with you, in terms of explaining the budget, the many supports we provide our students who are classified and who also have 504 plans within the district. We are abled and at this point are supporting over 1,000 classified students in our seven buildings and have over 27504 students. Before I describe those services, we would like to thank our secretaries, Colleen Buck, Phyllis Beverly, Susie Van Etten, Valerie Bloss, Teresa Padilla, Grace Bach, and Kathy Fico. All of them helped us prepare these slides and for this presentation tonight, and they support us in our work daily. Our services include many things, small class sizes, related services of occupational therapy, speech therapy, physical therapy, counseling, vision services, orientation and mobility, and teacher-of-the-hearing impaired services, to name a few. We also engage a number of consultants for students who have unique needs, such as behavior specialists, specialists in ABA, selective mutism, Tourette's, Fragilex syndrome, et cetera. And these consultants not only work with our teams who are serving our children, but they also work with parents. And when we put our budget together, we look at all of the services that we present, that we need, and the consultants that we may need. And we begin this in January every year, and we begin by looking at our classified proof schools who are aging into kindergarten. So our approach is from the time our students walk in the door. We provide many services and accommodations in the general ed environment and the special ed environment. Accommodations include things like extra time to directions clarified, to changes in the physical plant. We make physical plant accommodations, such as contrasting tape on stairwells, darker shades for classroom contrast, tennis balls on the legs of desks, acoustic sound panels to minimize noise and be a sound barrier. And currently, we have about 140 FM systems in our seven school buildings. Now, just to give you a little perspective, yesteryear FM systems were really just for students who were hearing impaired, and a teacher would wear a microphone, and that microphone would have a direct connect into the student's hearing aid. Over the years, they've advanced, and they have discovered that sometimes children have auditory processing disorders and have difficulty sifting out the ambient noise. So if a student is diagnosed with a central auditory processing disability, general surround sound is installed with no ambient noise interfering with the instruction. So it would be like being on an airplane, and if you were passenger one or passenger 300, you would clearly hear the directions from the pilot. We also use various aspects of assistive technology, which include voice-activated software, other equipment such as Dynavox, PEX, PEX board. We get large print books from the Commission of the Blind, calculators, word banks, and Bookshare, which is for the print challenged. Bookshare is a wonderful service for our students, and usually, it's for children who are visually impaired or have specific reading disabilities, hence the term print challenged. Our superintendent every year assigns an affidavit, a statement of assurance, that says that any curriculum that we purchase that you authorize must be registered and approved by NIMAC. NIMAC is the National Institute for Materials in Alternative Format. So what does that do? Students who qualify and are enrolled in this program really use this tool for homework or for unit tests and projects in school. And the beauty of the enrollment is that it's lifelong. It can, the students can avail themselves to this service in college and for the rest of their life in terms of pleasure reading. The texts, the technology provides for text to speech, can be a male voice or a female voice. It can be fast or slow. And interestingly enough, there's a word that's not understood by the student, like, for example, if they're reading a history series and it's about the Great Depression. They don't understand what the Great Depression is. They can click on it. They can highlight it, and it will actually give a definition of what the Great Depression is. It is available in a variety of languages for a child from a multilingual family. We provide those services to our K-12 students, and just as I shared with you earlier how we plan for entering Ks, we begin our transition planning for students age 14 in preparation for when they graduate from high school or age out at 21. Some of the things that may get lost in the scenario, and last but not least, while we have wonderful programs in our buildings and we contract with outside placements, none of this would happen without the wonderful staff in our transportation department. A student doesn't have special needs from 8 to 3. Our drivers and monitors are trained in the nature and needs of the individuals with the students of disabilities, and they are the first people in the morning and the last people at the end of the day to see our students. Kudos to them for their good work. Thank you again for your continued support that you give for our special ed program.
So enrollment, as of, I think, yesterday, was 6,938 students in Monroe Woodbury. That is only the students that attend our in-district programming. Of that 6,938, we have 1,009 students that are classified, that are educated in district. We have 120 students that are educated in out-of-district programming for a total of 1,129 students that are classified. Our current staffing is 81.8 special education teachers, 74 teaching assistants, 54 monitors, and 35 related service providers. For initiatives for next year, we are going to continue our co-teach program into sixth grade. We currently offer it in two of our fifth-grade buildings, and we will be offering it next year at the middle school for sixth grade. We will create a full-time co-teach program for kindergarten, and we will be creating a kindergarten 811 language-based ABA class, and that is a class of entering kindergartners who previously would have had to attend out-of-district programming.
We took a look at school age referrals over the past six years. We wanted to take a look at our in-district enrollment, the referrals to the Committee on Special Education, the number of classified students, transfers, transfers with out-of-district placements on IEPs, and the total amount of referrals. When we looked at our data trends, we actually looked at two different anomalies that showed up within our school age referrals. If you take a look at the 1415, you will see that our transfers with out-of-district placements on IEPs, 25 students transferred into the Monroe Woodbury School District with an out-of-district placement already on their IEPs, which we needed to honor. And in 1516, we had 180 referrals to the Committee on Special Education in which 100 of, 100 students were classified. Out of those 180 students, 114 were parent referrals, and 66 referrals were through our instructional support team. In addition to this, to the referrals to our in-district students in Monroe Woodbury, we took a look at our student classification in terms of trends, where we were seeing the most prevalent rise or decrease in terms of classification. As we know, across the nation, we are seeing an increase with students with autism, and here in Monroe Woodbury, we are also seeing an increase with students with autism. We do see decreases in other areas of classification simply because we are getting better at really identifying classifications in the educational setting.
So the out-of-district placements are pretty clear in terms of the chart. You can see that we've gone down in Orange Elster BOSI's and Rockland BOSI's. Part of that is for accounts for the class that we're opening up in Sapphire for the new 811 class. So we do have spots in the budget for children during the year, but the total has pretty much remained consistent over the years with that, in exception of that anomaly in 2015-16 when we had all of the transfers from out-of-district. Next slide. So we're going to scroll down in terms of my portion of the budget into HC tuition, which is handicap tuition and then BOSI's tuition. And again, you can see that we have a decrease. Two reasons are that we have a number of students graduating from the programs, and again, we are beginning a class in the K-level, so that reduces the other tuitions. If we could go to the next page. The guidance program is pretty constant in terms of the conferences, rental equipment, BOSI services, and supplies. You will see an increase in health services, other professional fees. That is for our students, our residents, who attend private and parochial schools outside the Monroe District. It originated from health education and welfare years ago. So those are what we pay the districts who provide nursing services, health services at those various schools. We do the same thing for children who attend Sacred Heart and Tevinay and St. Paul's. Our business office bills the sending districts for the health services. Now, it's gone up for, because last year, we had about 67 students who were attending private and parochial schools out of the Monroe Woodbury District. It's about 97 this year, so hence the reason for the increase. The other increase you will see is in the health services, other miscellaneous. The other increase you will see is in the health services, other miscellaneous. We are required and we pay for physicals for new staff each year, and that includes all the staff, the maintenance, the teachers, the clerical, the bus drivers. And there's a new vaccine. It's a three-stage vaccine that the staff receive, and as a result of this three vaccine shots, our costs went up for the medical services.
Can you go back to the first? So I am going, rather than going line by line, I'm just going to point your attention to the percent changes that are dramatic. And I'll start with the very top, which is legal professional fees, which has a 100% reduction. That money is actually just being moved to a Board of Ed Legals code, so the money is still in the budget, it is just no longer being budgeted with us in special education. The next budget code is about a little over halfway down, you'll see a percent increase of 71.43% for miscellaneous expenditures on the handicapped, and that increase is for increases in technology. We're bringing in co-teach team coaching and additional consultants that we have been using. The next increase is a really large one, it's 5,525% increase, but we have actually collapsed the 6402 code, and we've combined the 6401 code into that code, so it's really not an increase at all. It is just the taking of everything from 6402 and putting it into that 6401 code. The last increase is toward the bottom where it says 60.03%, and those are copy costs, and those costs are actually given to us annually by Bargoff, so we don't actually set those, sorry Bargoff. And those are the only ones that really have dramatic percentage increases for us here. And then on the next slide, you'll see that we have an overall reduction in budget of That's it, thank you very much. Any questions?
Sorry, I forgot where you were forgetting about the bottom. Is that yours or mine? Mine.
The remainder of our Book Two and Book Three presentation consists of a variety of different lines that are going to be split up between Patrick and I, dependent upon which area is budgeting for that particular budget code. The first area that we're going to speak about are core programs. The majority of these programs, we heard presentations from the building principals at the last Board of Education meeting. These costs include the costs associated with providing instruction in language arts, mathematics, science, and social studies. They include the cost of textbook supplies, lost or damaged books, workbooks, manipulatives, dues, and various publications, calculators, the maintenance of science equipment, and costs of maintaining our science labs. They're basically the costs associated with providing instruction to approximately 7,000 students. The vast majority of these budget lines, as I said, came from the consolidation of all of the various presentations that the principals made at the last Board of Education meeting. A few notable shifts that I'd like to speak to you about. The first is this one right here, the 64% increase of $42,000. That is the calculators that we spoke about at the last Board of Education meeting for the high school math classes. Another one that I want to point out is this reduction right here. Originally, when we heard from Mr. Kravitz, and he presented the high school budget, he was recommending the purchase of a biology textbook. Upon further review after that Board of Education meeting, we had room underneath the cap of our textbook aid for the 1617 school year. Basically, we receive a maximum amount of allotment that we can spend to receive aid on purchasing of textbooks, and you don't want to leave money on the table in terms of receiving state aid for that, and we had the resources to be able to purchase it. So we removed the biology books from next year's budget, we will be purchasing them this year underneath that cap of textbook aid. Actually, later on in the Board of Education, we'll be asking for your approval for those biology books, and they will be able to be purchased this year. Normally, we wait till after the budget vote for any books that need to be approved by the Board of Education for purchase with the subsequent year budget. So previously, that line, that overall science line was an increase, but now with the removal of those biology books, that ends up being a decrease in the science budget. The next area of the budget is, consists of district-wide programs. They are the costs associated with providing instruction in K-12, health, art, music, world languages, or languages other than English, family and consumer sciences, technology at the middle school and the high school, and our gifted and talented program, which begins in third grade. Yeah, three minutes, my three minutes are up, I can go very fast. The health education budget consists of the purchase of CPR books, first aid books, Red Cross membership, professional organization memberships, and elementary textbooks in health. The art supplies are predominantly consumable items that are used for art instruction. That $11,000 increase consists of nearly a $6,000 kiln at North Main, that was one of the things that Mr. Cotto presented at the last Board of Education meeting. The music costs include the costs associated with maintaining the district-owned musical equipment, the replacing, placement of old equipment, or the repair of damaged equipment, as well as the various instructional materials. The language other than English supports the Spanish, French, and Italian programs within the school district. Again, at the last Board of Education meeting, when we heard from both Mr. Kravitz and from Mr. Casti, the Loet Department, the World Languages Department was requesting for the purchase of a new Italian series. Once again, we had room underneath the cap for textbook aid for this year, so we are going to be able to purchase those Italian books as well under this year's budget, within this year's state aid for textbooks. They're also on the board agenda later on in the meeting for your approval. So that's ultimately why that line is such a significant reduction, because that was something that was in the budget that has now been removed for next year. Family and consumer science consists of the cost for our food and replacing various appliances. That increase, as Mr. Kravitz spoke about last time, is for one of the new electronic babies that they use in the child rearing classes up at the high school, they're actually quite expensive. The technology includes the cost of materials for our tech department, and the GNT is for our expand programs at the elementary and middle school level. Yes, the, yes, I have a one-year-old, so I'm not that far removed from that. The physical education and athletic budgets, the cost for physical education consists of all of the equipment and supply costs for our in-district physical education program, and includes the purchasing and maintenance of our physical education equipment, mats, and, you know, various sports equipment and things like that in each of the buildings. When the building principals presented to you last time, you saw a reduction at each of the building levels in the physical education lines because Lori Hawke, our athletic director, is consolidating the purchasing of the PE equipment to be able to get more purchasing power rather than having it take place individually in each of the buildings. So that's what ultimately that reduction is. The interscholastic costs include the fees associated with participation in interscholastic athletic competition, our Section 9 league fees, our fees associated with the Orange County Interscholastic Athletic Association, the maintenance of physical equipment, physical training equipment, and officiating. It does not include the transportation or staffing costs, which we've heard, we will hear about the staffing next week, we've heard about the transportation costs in a previous presentation. The increase in that line is due to four new sports programs that are being planned for next year, two modified teams, one freshman team, and the continuation of the Section 9 Unified Basketball Team. This also includes the shift in funding, which we've heard about with regards to the hockey program. The special secondary programs consist of in-school suspension. They have a budget of $200, which includes materials needed to engage students in reflective thinking when they're in our in-school suspension program. Our business education and career ed program is specific to the high school, and the costs include dues of various publications and study guides for our business law classes, and the occupational quarterly magazine for our career ed, as well as the assessment material for formal vocational inventories. And finally, our student activities fund provides funds for students in grades six through 12, and there are costs associated with activities that include anti-bullying assemblies, National Honor Society, the publication of our various school newspapers and periodicals, as well as the printing of the planners at the middle school. The instructional support line represents costs to operate the instructional programs of each of our buildings. The, again, we heard the principals present on this when they went at the last Board of Education meeting. This $62,000 increase is due to the various increases at each of the building levels for field trips that was spoken about at the last Board of Ed meeting. That's the overall total increase. The general supplies includes the maintenance of contracted equipment for paper, for furniture. It includes also various Bosse's costs. The main increase in this line, the $61,000 increase, you've heard various presentations about the Teachers College Reading and Writing Initiative that the district is embarking on. We have a contract this year that the district pays for directly through to Teachers College. Next year, we are going to be able to have our contract as a co-contract with PNW Bosse's, and we will be able to receive Bosse's aid for that Teachers College contract. So even though there's a $61,000 increase, the Bosse's line that that is going to be taken out of is in the 3800 code. You'll see some reductions later on that I'll touch upon, that I'll highlight, where the funds for that increase are being taken from in order to pay for that Teachers College contract next year. Again, the benefit is moving into that Bosse's code, we're going to cross-contract with PNW Bosse's and receive Bosse's aid on that down the road. And finally, the conference and meetings, we have a few of the buildings that are proposing some additional conferences and speakers for staff development. Educational support services, those are the costs associated with our academic intervention services program, as well as our English as a Second Language program. It includes the administrative costs associated with each of these two programs. The last item includes the textbook line, similar to what Mrs. Shepherdley was speaking about earlier. There are some costs associated with the various parochial schools that exist within the boundaries of our school district, we're obligated to provide some texts. We need to increase that line slightly this year due to a few additional requests that we received in textbooks. The instructional management is a district-wide code that's associated with a variety of different unfunded mandates. We're required to provide detailed analysis and reports of our Regents exams, of which I've done some presentations to the board on. Additionally, we're required to electronically scan and score all of our Regents exams, as well as our three-through-eight assessments. The remaining costs are associated with the scoring of our extended critical response questions. Aside from sending the Scantron sheets to the Mid-Hudson Regional Information Center, we also send out our assessments to be scored by an outside organization, outside, an outside company. One of the reductions that I spoke about with regards to the Teachers College contract is coming out of one of the instructional management lines, and that's a reduction of $25,000. There's a few other codes that are smaller reductions, but the largest reduction is that $25,000 line. The committee services are costs associated with the Sunday Swim Program, the after-school enrichment program, as well as the summer enrichment programs. These programs are financially self-sustained, and the revenues are paid largely by the participants. Finally, the curriculum and development line are costs associated with staff development, various costs for Bosse's, where we have to send our staff, our counselors, to critical incidents stress management, staff development. We also have to train our administrators annually to be lead evaluators according to state regulations.
Okay, so we're moving on to the central office, start off with the business office here. So the first code over here is 0400, that's the program code for business administration. The first four digits, the function code, are 1310 on that. We're looking at an increase of about $16,000 here. Now, these are costs associated with materials and supplies, conferences, all the sort of incidental expenses associated with the accounting office, the payroll office, and my office. This increase is entirely having to do with the movement of the budget and the costs associated with administrative fees charged by Bosse's for the management of the health plan, from the health insurance budget code to our Bosse's code. So the business office also charges the, it's actually a resolution on the agenda for this evening, the costs associated with participation in the purchasing coser to a Bosse's code under 1310, you know, program code 400, and our participation in the GASP 45 coser, which is the analysis for our financial statements of the long-term costs for retiree health insurance. So this change is an increase in our budget area, but a decrease in the health insurance budget line. And Michael, you and I had had a conversation about some of the other codes that, what we're, essentially what we're doing with the health insurance line is we're disaggregating some of the costs associated with it, and we're creating some additional budget codes that have better transparency and better clarity as far as what we're budgeting. In the past, we had the health insurance budget code, and the actual premiums for health insurance were charged there, as were the Medicare Part B reimbursements that we pay to retirees, these administrative expenses, and a few other items. So we feel that we'll have better clarity if we itemize those in our budget, because as I've said before, we have a lot of flexibility with budget codes. We can have, you know, tremendous number or fewer number, and you've heard us this evening talk about collapsing certain codes, and now I'm talking about an expansion of codes. In terms of the audit here, this is a decrease of about $5,000, and that accounts for our external audit, our current auditor is Nugent-Hausler, so that's an annual requirement. And we also budget our internal audit in that area. We feel, you know, based on the way things have been going, that $65,000 will be more than adequate to cover that. The internal audit will, I think also, as we tighten things up, that that cost will go down a little bit. And if you recall, the internal audit is the audit where they do a risk assessment, they sort of globally look at the operations of the school district, and then pick an individual area to do a more focused on it of. Treasurer, no change here, so these are just sort of incidental expenses associated with the treasurer's office. Tax collector, no change is there as well, so that would be the, not necessarily the salaries, but the postage, the reproduction costs, et cetera, associated with tax collection. Insurance, we're seeing about a little over four and a half percent increase here. The insurance, we're part, there's a few insurances there, we're part of the New York School Insurance Reciprocal, it's a cooperative that we're a part of, it's, again, a bunch of hundreds of school districts in the state, it banded together and essentially self-insure. So that's our commercial liability, our auto insurance, a few other insurances there. That's also student accident insurance, and let's see, there's insurance for tank liability, we have some underground fuel tanks. But again, experience-rated, so as we put in more claims, you know, our premiums go up, so we're budgeting a small increase there. No change to refund of prior year taxes, this would be for charges associated with errors, clerical errors, or omissions, where a taxpayer may have been, may have paid too much in their taxes because an exemption was not put on their parcel. This can come years later, years after the fact when it's discovered, so there's no change there, but that's where we charge those expenses. Debt service, minimal change, it's essentially flat, and that's a number that we, you know, we know very well because it's all established payment schedules. We currently have four bonds outstanding, four instruments, in addition to our energy performance contract. And I've mentioned this in the past, one of our bonds will be paid off in four or five years, that'll be savings of about $623,000. Another two years, another bond for about $1,175,000 will come off. So we, as we've mentioned in the past, we'd like to time new debt service as the old debt service is paid off. Inter-fund transfers, here's an increase of about $25,000. This is near the end of the budget, has a function code of nine, it's actually the last category in the budget report. We're losing the poster over there. We're losing the poster over there. So the inter-fund transfer, again, near the end of the budget, it has to do with the district cost of the summer handicap program. Now, that is the term that SED has, uses for this, and it's a program where the district is responsible for 20% of the cost to run this summer program. It's accounted for in the F Fund, the special aid fund, but the general fund has to make that 20% contribution, so you see that transfer. It's an increase because we were a little short last summer, last year, on this, and it's both a combination of our in-district program and the added district placements for students that really need, you know, school 12 months of the year. And finally, we have our BOSEs administrative and capital charges. So this is really three things. It's the administrative charge for BOSEs, the capital charge, and the rental charge, and it's, again, dictated, prescribed by BOSEs. It's allocated based on an ARWADA, which is Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance, like an enrollment figure. And it, what essentially has to do with is the administrative charges or expense for BOSEs, the staffing for their administrators, and retiree health insurance is another expensive element in that. Any capital expenses BOSEs incurs, either through capital projects or capital savings, transferred to capital fund, like the same way we do, and then any rental fees. So here, we're seeing about a, almost 11% increase, 10.7% increase, and I think it's largely due to the increase in health insurance that we're experiencing, that all the districts that are part of the OU health plan are experiencing, because they're paying for their retiree health insurance. So again, they pass that on to us. It's out of our control, but all the component districts in the BOSEs have to share in that cost. So the overall increase is $176,304, about 2.23%. Again, I'd like to point out, though, that they, at $108,000, and our insurance at $24,000, largely out of our control. Okay, here we have the Board of Education, and again, these are function codes 1010. It's actually the first grouping in the budget report. The program code is 0100, and you'll notice this fairly large increase of $50,000, but...
Pay raises?
Sorry, Don, no. This is the other half of the $50,000 reduction under Special Education Legal. So we felt is, it just made more sense to sort of consolidate some of the legal charges in the more general Board of Ed legal code, because a lot of, a lot of our legal services and things just roll up into that code. And budget code precision, precision only has value if you utilize it, and in this case, sort of parsing out every expense on a invoice, really, it's not something we do. It's very time-consuming. It doesn't really have much value, so that's a shift there. Otherwise, it's entirely flat budget. The district clerk is a relatively flat budget with, it's actually a slight decrease of about 2%. Chief school administrator is up $5,000. I think that mostly has to do with some additional conferences and some additional supplies that are needed. And finally, program code 1400, Community Relations, increase of about $12,600. This has to do with our website, maintenance and support of our website, the printing that we do for the budget and other publications, and the, some of the public relations work that we receive through Capital Region BOSEs. So the overall change here is an increase of $66,765, about 18%, but a lot of that has to do with this $50,000 move within the budget. Okay, personnel management is essentially the incidental costs associated with the Human Resources Office, and again, this is a relatively modest increase, 1.4%. If you recall, last year, this was a fairly substantial year-over-year increase. We went from around $100,000 to $145,000, but that, that had to do with the purchase of the My Learning Plan software and the ASOP. So the My Learning Plan is the, we're sort of moving paperlessly to have people request time off, and the ASOP is the sub, the online subsystem. So we're going to continue to budget this year. I think next year, we may move this out, because I understand that we're negotiating with ASOP directly, and we're going to actually probably relocate some of that to data processing budget, Bargav's budget. So you'll see a decrease here next year, and we'll be talking about, you know, moving it from one budget code to the next, but for the time being, it remains in...
That should save us in other areas, correct? Using this, using the automated saves us quite a bit of money.
Yes, that's right. We need fewer, you know, staff and things, yeah. So bottom line here is it's a relatively flat budget year-over-year. Okay, and finally, what I wanted to do is just, again, sort of touch on a couple of categorical aids. We've, tonight, we've talked about pupil personnel services and special education. Dr. Hassler talked about textbooks, and he alluded to the instructional materials, more than alluded to, I guess, spoke about the instructional materials aid and textbook aid. So what I wanted to do is talk a little bit about public access high-cost aid. So this is aid associated with special ed expenditures, and I've mentioned this when I talked about special ed. There's also private excess high-cost aid, but they're similar, and this is the more important one, so I just wanted to run through this very quickly again. So it's a program for 10-month special education programs only, so it's not the summer aid program. That's something different. That's the transfer to capital I mentioned before. And so we're talking about, because it's public, district-operated programs, BOSEs and other public placements. Occasionally, we would have a public placement somewhere else. Districts sometimes will place a student in another district if they have room in a program and it's nearby, that kind of thing. Helps both, it's beneficial to both districts. The eligibility, the cost must exceed the lesser of $10,000 or four times the approved operating expense. It's really not that important, but the formula is what I really wanted to talk about here. So the formula is the annual cost for tuition, related services, and other incidental costs minus a deductible, if you will. And the deductible is computed as three times the approved operating expense for the school district, multiplied by the FTE of the student. So all that means is a full-time equivalent. So if the student is there for the entire year, it would be one, multiplied by a ratio, an aid ratio. And I've talked about different types of aid. So this is a categorical aid, but it's also an expense-driven aid. So for Monroe Woodbury, our latest approved operating expense is about $14,500, so multiplied by three is $43,668. So that's the deductible on the expense. And our excess cost aid ratio is about 58.7%. So in this example, I'm citing an example here, let's say the cost for tuition-related services is about $78,000, which is not unreasonable. Our deductible would be $43,000, leaving an aidable expense of about $34,000. So we then take that aidable expense, multiply by our ratio, our excess cost aid ratio, 58.7, leaving us with state aid of about $20,153, and the percentage is just the aid over the full expense. So it's not one-for-one, but it is aid related to, you know, high-cost special education students, and obviously, as the individual expense increases, the aid, the percentage would increase. And tends to be a little bit easier to generate aid for this when you're sending students out of district, because it's generated on a per-pupil basis. So if we had an in-district program, and we would, let's say we had eight students in a class, we would, you know, look at that, the teacher, the other adults in the room, and divide that by eight. So there is some aid available. The other thing I wanted to mention was just the system to input this to New York State Ed Department. It's called the System to Track and Account for Students, the STACK system. And what we actually literally have to do is submit claims, cost information, cost data, to SED, and it's sort of an ongoing basis. SED reviews that, approves those expenses. There's a lot, there can be a lot of back and forth with this, and it's a, it's sort of a difficult program to administer, because you can have revisions years after the fact, and it can go in your favor or not go in your favor. And so it's, from an accounting perspective, it's hard to sort of track what your receivables are, and ultimately, you know, the kind of aid that you can predict into the future. In fact, for the state aid runs, what the, what the state aid department does is they just use a three-year average of what you've been getting to project your public excess high-cost aid. So I mentioned some of the costs, the eligible cost, tuitions, related services are the big ones, but there are some other, you know, other costs that are eligible, the teacher paraprofessional salaries, benefits for in-district programs, related services, and any other special equipment or contracted services. And then the other, you know, categorical aid I wanted to talk about was instructional materials aid. So Dr. Hassler alluded to the textbook aid, and what we have is a, overall, there's a per-pupil dollar apportionment each year, and so that's multiplied by our enrollment. So your aid would be the, let's see, whichever is less, what you spend or your per-pupil apportionment, you know, multiplied by the enrollment. So in the textbook aid area, we multiply about $58.25 by our enrollment, and $58.25, I think, was the cost of a textbook 20 years ago, you know, like when I was in college kind of thing, when the program originated. They haven't changed that amount, so it's, it's probably grossly inadequate, but, you know, that's the, that's the apportionment that we could spend up to. And it's the kind of thing where, as Dr. Hassler mentioned, you want to spend this money. We spend the money this year, and we'd receive one-for-one aid on that in the subsequent year. So there's computer software aid, that's $14.98 per pupil, and it's for software, annual licensing fees, library materials, there's some aid there, $6.25 for library materials, printed materials with a useful life of more than one year. And then there's computer hardware aid, and this is a little bit different because there's an aid ratio involved. It's $24.20 multiplied by our enrollment, multiplied by an aid ratio. So that can be used for more than simply equipment. It can be used for instruction and the use of equipment, repair and training, and some peripheral devices. And so finally, I just wanted to show you some state aid factors. So we talked about some of these factors, these ratios that go into state aid computations, and this document is, it's a partial document, it's not the full document. It came from Quest R3 BOSEs, their state aid and financial planning, planning service. And so let's see, so the notable, notable items here, I sort of bolded this. So this is called the Combined Wealth Ratio. It's, it's actually two factors. It's our per-pupil full-value wealth, so in other words, our wealth in property tax value or ratables per pupil, and then our adjusted gross income, so it's weighted 50% for those two items. And it's interesting here that the state average is one, so that's how they do it. If you're, if you're wealthier than state average, you'd be above one, and if you're less wealthy than state average, you're below one. So our combined wealth ratio is about .8, the interesting thing there. Here's the, the public excess cost aid ratio I was just speaking about before, it's 58.7%. You see this private excess cost for aid ratio is a little bit higher, and our transportation aid ratio is about .65, and this is our BOSEs aid ratio, and the computation is the higher of three different ratios. So our aid ratio for BOSEs expenses is fairly high, about .7, and, because it has to do with this milage ratio, which is, has to do with our tax rate. And let's see, finally, over here, this is our three-year average of free and reduced price lunch. It's about 17%, 17.12%, and that's a, as you alluded to, Mr. Lorenzo, for folks to sign up for free and reduced if they're eligible. That's a very important metric or factor in state aid computations. It's used in a lot of state aid computations. So really, it benefits the student if they're eligible to sign up, and it benefits the district in the computation of state aid to maximize that number and really have that be accurate and as high as we can make it. So that was it. Are there any, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, anything from facilities?
We met briefly. I think the big news is Patrick met with the Department of Transportation. I don't know if there's any update on that, Patrick.
Yeah, so we did have our meeting with the DOT, and we had LAN there, our architects, LAN associates, LAN, actually, I was very happy. There were four people from LAN there. And essentially, what we, what we did was, we agreed that there would be certain things that we would ask New York State DOT to do to compensate or mitigate the impact on the district of the Exit 131 construction project. We, I think at this point, we're thinking the access road from the high school through Route 32 would be something that must be done, and they're more, they're willing and able to do that. We, we had a discussion about their original plan, which involved increasing the, reconfiguring and increasing the parking in the front of CV. So I think what we agreed is that some of that may remain, but we're not going to, we're going to ask them not to increase the parking lot in size and rather negotiate the parking in a different area closer to the athletic fields. They also were fairly clear about what is, in terms of damages, what is compensatory and what is not, and it's based on eminent domain law. So there is still some, you know, some areas to be negotiated, but basically, the takeaway is they need this done very quickly, which I think is, is actually good for us, because we can get it behind us, but also enhances our negotiating position, you know, with some of these two. Very respectful meeting, you know, we essentially relayed that we're going to be partners in this thing and, and try to, you know, mitigate the impact as much as possible, but I conveyed that the community can be concerned, it's going to be a multi-year project, and, you know, and I know they do this all the time, but, but we really are looking out for our community, our constituency, and they have to, you know, take all that into consideration as well.
And the architects came back with a plan that the facilities committee reviewed for submission to, to help us come up with the DOT pricing, and that was part of the number. So I guess it's all contingent on what the DOT lets us know in the next few weeks. I'm sure there'll be more negotiations.
Right. Next step is just wait for the DOT response?
Right, right.
All right, thank you. Item 10, honors class selection process. Dr. Hassler, Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Kravitz.
So we're here this evening to speak to you about our secondary accelerated and honors programs, as well as their selection process. Thanks to the board for the opportunity to speak to you about this and for raising questions that have been brought to your attention by parents in the community. This is actually an area that's been under review by us even prior to this presentation, because we've had probably similar questions and concerns that you've heard that have been brought directly to our attention, and we'll be speaking about some of the things that we have uncovered with regards to that review and some steps that we're going to be taking to hopefully address some of those questions and concerns. You want to come?
Mrs. Soto, you didn't come up, I'm sorry. You have to run.
We hope this evening to address many of the questions and concerns that, again, you guys have heard, and certainly the ones that have been brought to our attention. So we have a lot of different things that we've kind of packed into this, so hopefully we can get to the questions during the presentation, but if you have any direct questions yourself that we haven't answered at the end, certainly feel free to ask them. We're going to start with a quick overview about the current accelerated and honors programs that are being offered in each of the buildings.
Good evening, everybody. In the middle school, we only have two accelerated, actually, two, two areas of in the curriculum that are accelerated program, but three accelerated classes. Our seventh grade, we have an accelerated math, which then leads into the accelerated eighth-grade algebra, and in the, in the science, we have the accelerated eighth-grade biology. All three of these courses are weighted the same as any other course that students take, they're just... they're just accelerated courses, so there's no impact on GPA, being that in the middle school, there really is no ranking with GPA, so we just feel that we leave them at the same weight as all the other classes when we're calculating our honor rolls.
And the curriculum for the algebra program and the biology program are the same as Algebra I and Biology at the high school. It is a regents level, algebra, regents level biology class, so there's no weighting that's attached to it. And our programs that are currently being offered at the high school include...
So we have honors classes nine through 12 in each of the core subjects, math, English, social studies, and science. And we also have our students who have the opportunity to participate in our AP courses, as you see listed on the board. I'd also like to bring your attention to a unique course. It's a science research course. That course also has an honors weight to it, but what makes this course so unique is that it gives our students the opportunity to collaborate with professionals in the science field. In essence, these professionals have made a commitment to collaborate with our students, really, in essence, serve as mentors while their time in the high school. In development, we have our AP Physics A course and our AP Intro Computer Science course, which we can talk a little about, a little about that later on. But what's so nice about these courses, not only are they honors courses or AP courses, but we've also developed a relationship with SUNY Orange Community College and SUNY Albany, where our teachers teach the course and our kids are given the opportunity to earn college credit while in high school. Same thing, as I said, we also have honors courses in English and social studies. You can continue on to the next slide. Thanks, Eric. We also offer courses in math. Again, same as the English courses and the social studies courses, we have our honors weight, our AP weight, our Calculus AB class and our Calculus BC class, our students also earn college credit.
So now, we'll speak a little bit about the selection process in each of the buildings and how kids get chosen to participate in these programs.
So displayed on this screen is the matrix components that we use to select our students in our accelerated math, as well as our science criteria. As you can see, to begin to be matrix, you have to have a 90-year grade average in either sixth grade or seventh grade, depending on the area, either math or science. And then they're very similar into looking at quarter grades, as well as some mid-year assessments. And you'll notice in the math, in sixth grade, we give the students an algebra readiness test, which is also a component of the matrix. And then in the science criteria, we have a science placement exam as well, which is not the standalone part to get into the course, but part of the overall matrix. All these are put together to create a list of students, and we take the top 90 to 100 students from the matrix at this time.
You want to... Oh, yeah.
The middle school also collaborates with the high school in helping determine honors for Global 9H, the English 9H, as well as the pre-AP Global. That matrix consists of the seventh grade final average from either the ELA or social studies, and then the first and second quarter averages of the eighth grade ELA or social studies, depending on the matrix we're developing, and then a teacher recommendation is part of that as well.
And before we click the slide, the reason that you don't see math or science on here for ninth grade is those students that were identified for the accelerated programs in the eighth grade, those children, as they move into ninth grade, go into, they take algebra, a regular algebra course in eighth grade, as upon entering ninth grade, they're in our geometry nine honors. And then our science biology students in eighth grade, which is a regular biology class, when they enter ninth grade, they are in our earth science honors course.
There's no selection process? The students go from those courses in the middle school directly into the classes in high school?
So at the high school level, there is what Mr. Cassidy just talked about, which are the students who come into our building, and by the time they get there, they're already labeled or classified, or not classified, they're selected as part of the honors program. In addition, we have a number of students who demonstrate ability during the course of their time at the high school, whether in ninth grade or 10th grade or 11th grade, who decide, either decide themselves, I'd like an opportunity or a crack at the honors classes, or their parents or teachers decide, you know what, I've identified my child or this student as possibly being able to handle an honors, or the rigor of an honors level course. What we currently have, or what's currently in place, is students fill out a, an honors course request agreement form, and they have an opportunity, well, these three, the four things on the bottom are taken into consideration, a first quarter grade, a second quarter grade, a midterm grade, and teacher recommendation. After discussing and going over that with the students, a teacher, the teacher recommendation, and ultimately the department chair helps to decide whether or not a child's going to be a part of our honors program. And that's what we currently have.
So to start to speak about some of the questions and concerns with a variety of these items, one of the challenges has been, and I'm going to click back one of the slides in speaking with parents, has been this particular area where we initially, in developing the matrix, identify students with a 90 average or greater in sixth grade math, and the first, second quarter, and third quarter average quarter grades, and all of these various items. There are students who meet this criteria, but may not necessarily get ultimately selected into a particular honors or accelerated class. And we get a lot of questions from parents about, why is that so? You start with this criteria, but because of the matrix, for many, many years, we basically have capped the number of students that have been in a particular class. So one of the first things that we're looking at addressing that is certainly to increase the number of honors and AP opportunities for our students. And some of those opportunities, we have the ability to be able to do without any staffing implications. For example, we said earlier that we have some honors classes in ninth grade English and ninth grade Global Studies, English 9H, Global Studies 9H, Global Studies 10H, English 10H. Those classes are classes that we offer to students. If a student is not in an honors class, they then take English 9, which is a regents path track course, or Global 9, which is on track for the Global course. If a student takes, if we have more students that take the honors classes, we would have less sections of the regents class. That's something that we have the capability to do now, that is something that we plan on doing moving forward, in order to be able to, again, give kids the opportunity. So rather than saying students that have met that criteria and moving away from that matrix model, more kids have the opportunity to be able to get into. We also have the opportunity in doing that and creating additional sections to have a student challenge opportunity, which I'm going to speak a little bit more in a minute. Another major thing that we've heard a lot from parents is, where can I find the criteria to get into these programs? And we need to publish that, that hasn't been. We will be including all of the various items that we are speaking about tonight, moving forward, are going to be published in our student handbooks. So that way, I mean, this process, even though I'm presenting to you right now, we're all presenting to you right now, the current process, there have been years where it's evolved back and forth in a variety of different ways. We didn't mention in any of these, I don't think, did we talk about tests? There have been some years where, in order to get into the Global, into the Global 9H program, there was a test where students had to take, and you had to get a certain score on the test. Other years, we haven't offered that test. And there have been times when the parents have been notified mid-school year that there's going to be a test coming up for them to sit down and take. We need to make sure that we get out ahead of this, and we clearly outline for parents and students what the expectation is for students to get into our honors programs. That includes all of the various forms that students have to complete. Another thing that we're looking at doing is to have clear criteria across the board, because there's been variation between each of the departments in terms of where students need to fall in terms of getting into some of these courses. We're going to be looking to streamline that. One of the things that we're looking to streamline is the teacher recommendation process. We had a conversation earlier today when we were discussing this presentation, and I gave them the example of when, when I was previously a soccer coach in the school district, when I first took over the program, we would have cuts for the soccer team. And initially, it was, here's the 20 or so kids on my soccer team that make it, and here's the students that are going to get cut, and I'm sorry you didn't make the team, you're going to get cut. As the years progressed, I would have parents who would ask to meet with me and ask me, why did their athlete get cut from the team? And rather than me saying, it's just my soccer intuition that tells me, I needed to have concrete evidence in order to be able to support that, I developed a rubric. And at soccer tryouts, we had a sheet, and it was, how did a student perform in each of the various tests that we expected the kids to do in the tryouts? And then if somebody questioned me when I sat down and spoke with the athletes, or I sat down and spoke with the parents, I was able to say, here are the various categories. We had a rubric of one through five, and it was actually calculated. And I could sit and give concrete evidence as to why that decision was being made. And that's something that we are in the process of developing now, is a clearly defined rubric for teacher recommendations of various items that the teachers are going to evaluate concretely to determine a student's recommendation into the programs. Another thing that we've been speaking about at length is, what happens if all of these various things that we have been discussing, you have a student who, for whatever reason, doesn't meet the criteria or, you know, is on the, on the other side of the selection process to get in? We are in the process of developing a student challenge opportunity. That process has not been finalized yet, because we are still reaching out to school districts, getting various copies of forms, and looking at procedures that other school districts are doing to instill a student challenge process where, if things don't go the student's way during the selection process, the student has the opportunity to be able to challenge. Part of that, aside from, you know, putting a form together, there's going to be a committee. The committee's going to consist of an administrator, a teacher, and a counselor, and they will review the challenge of the student, and they're going to discuss the student's ability to be able to accept that challenge and go into the program. One of the things I do want to emphasize is that some of the changes that we are going to take place, that I've been speaking about, we will be able to have in place for September. There are some changes that are going to have to happen over multi-years, because, as I said to you, increasing opportunities for some of the honors and AP classes involve staffing that currently exists, having less sections of a regents course, more sections of an honors course. There are other opportunities where we're going to have further conversations with the Board of Education, talking about if, for example, right now, the matrix system that we use, if we move more towards a criteria system, if you look at the performance of our students on the biology regions in eighth grade, for example, we have a very high degree of success of our students who take biology in eighth grade. They do exceptionally well. However, there may be a student who, and a parent, who they're okay with their child getting in the 80s on the biology regions in eighth grade, because they know that that child is going to, even though they get in the 80s on the regents exam in eighth grade, they're going to open up opportunities for them to take more AP courses when they get into the high school. And they would prefer having those advanced placement opportunities in high school than holding on for another year to maybe get a couple points higher on that biology regions. Right now, that's not something that we've done here in the school district. The challenge becomes for us, once you start talking about more AP courses, we have the flexibility now to be able to open up additional sections of honors. Many of the AP courses are elective courses, where we are going to have to, in order to be able to accomplish this, we would have to add additional electives into our course offerings. Right now, it's either the handful of students who have the room in their schedule, who maybe have taken biology, could potentially take physics when they get into the high school, otherwise, the students may potentially be taking a study hall. If we have more kids that we need to give opportunities to get into the AP courses later on in their high school career, we're going to have to have discussions about the possibility of adding additional electives into our programs. That's going to warrant further conversation with the Board of Education. So there are some things now that we can do in the very near future, giving more opportunities now to kids in some of these honor programs that we're speaking about, be more transparent with our process, including all the criteria and selection process in each of our handbooks, making sure the parents are aware of that at open houses, streamlining and making consistent the selection process in more of the departments, including the teacher recommendation piece with regards to establishing a concise rubric that's going to be used across the board, and developing that student challenge piece. These are things that we are going to be able to do in the immediate future. There are going to be steps in years to come that are going to warrant further conversation with the Board of Education. Questions? Yes?
What paths would a student new to our district have for getting into an honors program?
Sure. One of those things involves certainly a transcript evaluation, and it's going to determine based upon what they come to the table with, what high school credit they come to the table with in their previous school district. Right now, if a student comes in in eighth grade, we would be, they would be coming in with middle school, you know, middle school scores from the previous school district, and they would be able to go into there. But also, there's going to be the student challenge opportunity, where if, for whatever reason, we encounter a transcript that doesn't align well with the same offerings that we have within our school district, then that challenge piece could certainly be an option for a new student.
For example, if a student came from another state where they don't take regents courses...
Correct, correct.
It will also depend on the time of the year that they enroll. So if they enroll before the school year starts, we have options. If they enroll in October and we've already started, it might be harder to fit them into a particular class.
Go ahead, sure.
Can I ask that when you're putting in as part of your selection process, how it is that you're notifying people? Because I know that's come up quite a bit, too, is as a parent, how do I know that my child has reached some of these benchmarks and some of these criteria? When do I find out if they are being considered for eighth grade biology or the honors class? So I think that's part of the process.
Well, to be honest, the reason why people ask that question is because they didn't know what the criteria was in advance, necessarily. So hopefully, by getting out there and making sure that people know what the criteria is that is going to be used, people will know right away, you know what? You're getting the report card, you're seeing how well your child is doing, you know, certainly we'll have an official notification process, but even still, there's not going to be any mystery, because some people get notified, not realizing that, based upon, you know, the six things that have been listed. And that's one other thing that I want to, I want to comment on. Some of the, some of the changes and modifications that we are, that we're looking at for the, for the 17, 18 school year, we're still talking about some of those matrix elements. Moving forward, part of our evaluation process is sort of moving away from that matrix model, because in the end, that matrix model ends up being, you know, you're talking about a cap. And right now, we might be able to say, right now, we're capping it at 100. We might be able to create a few additional sections of honors courses and reduce the regents courses, and maybe increase that cap to 150, 175 students to give more students the opportunity, plus to make room for that student challenge. But then also, moving away from the idea of capping at all, and just establishing clear-cut criteria, and any student that meets that criteria is given the opportunity to be able to come in if they so choose. And there's no mystery about sliding scales or any of that.
What would be an argument for it to not work that way?
About not doing that?
Like if you pose criteria...
Right.
And you meet that criteria, how could you, as a selection process, say that the kid shouldn't be in the class if the kid wants to be there?
Right. One of the, one of the issues has been, the sliding scale, for the most part, ends up being, how can we, and sometimes this is difficult to explain, how can we try to end up capturing kids? And the issue becomes, because you get different student scoring, you know, student scoring on a different, you know, basis every single year, some years you only may get 75 students that may necessarily fulfill that criteria. And we look at it like, if we have 100 seats, we may drop that line down a little bit more in order to be able to scoop up more kids. But then on the flip side, on a year where you have a lot of high-achieving students, you might have a student who gets a 92 or a 93 overall average, who may not necessarily get into that. And that's, that's been the, the argument for a long time.
Too unfair.
And that's, you know, that's one of the reasons why we're taking a serious look at that. Because in the end, because we want to make sure that we are doing right for the kids. And you're right, it becomes difficult speaking to a parent who, they know the previous year, a student with certain marks was given the opportunity to get in, again, depending upon where that sliding scale was, but the subsequent year, that student with the same scores was not given that opportunity. And it becomes hard to justify that. And the mindset has been a good one, trying to, again, capture as many kids, but in the end, it's if we have the ability to be able to offer some of these courses, particularly the honors courses where you just offer less sections of regents courses and more of honors courses, we should be doing that.
I think the other thing, though, that, the other thing that is a concern, and you talked about it, which is, there's a criteria, and then they have teacher recommendation. And I think that's the piece that's very ambiguous. And so one of the things that I believe you're working on is not having that be ambiguous.
Right. And all of these forms are going to be published. So once the, and the student is going to know when we have this rubric finalized of how they're going to be evaluated by their teacher, it's not, I highly recommend, I recommend, I slightly recommend, or whatever. It is going to be a series of different categories with a rubric on, how well does the student complete their homework? How well does the student perform on in-class assessments? How well, and it's going to be, go ahead.
No, no. It does two things. When you set a rubric, a student who enters into a classroom knows if he or she wants to get into an accelerated classroom or move on into an honors class, they know what the expectation is. When you don't publish a rubric, it's a mystery. And when you have a piece that says, that allows teachers to have teacher recommendation, and that's not a rubric, that's a mystery. And I think that we don't want to have that anymore, because it creates a sense of, well, you didn't pick me because you didn't like me, or you didn't pick me because I didn't do my homework, or you didn't pick me because, and I think that we need to remove that mystery and have really clear expectations for our students. And I'm glad to hear that we're talking about challenge, because the one thing that we don't want to do is a student who really wants to work hard, that we say no. Because I don't find that students fight to be into honors class because they just want to. They are hardworking students, and that's something that we want to encourage rather than discourage. So I'm happy to hear that we're using a lot of, we're becoming more transparent, we're having rubrics that students know at the beginning of the year, so that they have a goal, and parents understand how they get into classes and what they need to do.
You took it like you wanted to say something.
I was going to, but I won't.
Okay.
Just one more thing.
Sure.
So from the middle school, that is a stepping stone, if you're in honors classes, into freshman year, if I understood you correctly, and I don't know if you address this, but say you don't get into the honor courses in your middle school year, how is it assessed going into freshman year? Like how do you get, you know, say you do well on the regular, say you have a 95 average, does that kid get looked at and put into honors class freshman year? Or is it only the kids on the path of honors in middle school into freshman year that get that opportunity?
And there's sort of two answers to that question. One of them is sort of moving away from that matrix model of just capping at a certain number of kids and moving to more of a criteria model. It's if you meet this criteria, you're in. The other piece of that is instituting the challenge. If for whatever reason, all of the other factors...
Right, it sounds like all the new stuff is going to be worked up, but right now, there's not a process in place for that kid to do that.
That is not in place now.
Okay.
That is something that, yes, absolutely.
Right, because those eighth grade students are already captured. It's...
Right, and they're the only ones that move into freshman year in that program. Other eighth graders who, say, have a 95 average, don't get that opportunity going into freshman year, right now, the way it currently works.
Right, they could do it for sophomore year, but they wouldn't be able to. For example, those students who take that algebra in eighth grade.
Yep, okay.
There's no algebra honors in ninth grade.
Mm-hmm.
What's the role that guidance counselors play in this process? Are they letting the students be aware of these courses?
So the guidance counselor plays a variety of sort of different roles, ranging from making sure that the kids are aware of what the criteria is, because the kids certainly have questions about that, but also, particularly with the student challenge piece, where if the system is not capturing all of the kids, we would hope that the student challenge piece becomes something that is particularly motivating on the counseling side, saying, you know something? You are crushing this class right now. For whatever reason, you weren't selected for the honors class this year, you need to hop on this challenge piece. And not having just the math necessarily be the dictator of whether or not the student gets in.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm tired. I'm asleep.
Item 11, approval of textbooks. Do we have to go back to Dr. Hassel for this one?
Yes. He's got 30 seconds.
We are asking board approval for the various textbooks that are listed on the board agenda. It includes the biology book, the Italian books, and the Spanish for heritage speaker books that were previously in the budget for 17, 18, but we now have the capacity to purchase this year underneath the textbook aid that Mr. Cahill spoke about.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, approval of the superintendent evaluation form.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, approval of the 2017, 2018 student calendar.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody made their vacation plans. Motion carries.
Next year, we won't be here.
This is a lot more exciting when it's before nine o'clock, but when I'm ready.
Item 14, personnel, Harry.
I'd ask that the board move the items under the personnel section of the agenda, 14-1 through 14-12. It's a little light compared to several of the previous meetings, but there are some important items on the agenda tonight. Particularly, I would like to refer to the retirements section, and I believe the superintendent wanted to say something about the retirements, or not.
No, I did, I did. I'm sorry, it's just been a long night. We have four administrators that have decided to retire, and with them, they probably take over 100 years of experience. And it's not just you, Dolores. I had to say that.
Hold up, put you up to that?
But I want to just take a moment to thank each and every one of them. Mrs. Shepherdley, Mrs. Turecki, Mr. Faldemeyer, and Mr. Blosser. Just to say thank you for the years that you've had in this district and the passion that you've brought every day, and you will be sorely missed. I welcome you back anytime, if you want to torment me, Dolores especially, please feel free, but honestly, you will be sorely missed. And I know that John wanted to say a special thank you. He couldn't be here tonight, and he felt really bad that we were going to announce these retirements. So on John's behalf, I thank you.
I do have a motion to approve personnel items.
Motion.
I wasn't quite finished.
Oh, I apologize.
I do have to say, I appreciate the comments of the superintendent, but as the assistant superintendent for HR, I do have to remind the board that there is an age discrimination policy that the district is, that has to be aware of, and...
I said 100 years collectively, I didn't say any...
With that being said, and particularly the comments of Mrs. Turecki, I take it personally offensive since she's younger than me.
Good job.
Now...
Now?
Now you can...
Motion. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15, business and financial, Patrick?
Yes, so I would just ask for the approval of the items under business and financial, which include our standard financial reports, there's five contracts, one contract for staff development for security guards and other personnel, two contracts for student services related to special education, one contract for student physicals, and one contract for the renewal of a lease agreement we have with the town of Monroe for a summer program to use some of our buses. And finally, there's a resolution, I mentioned this earlier, for our participation in the OU-BOCS cooperative purchasing co-sur. It's a standard document, we pass it every year.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, appointment of election inspectors and administrative support.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, appointment of election board registration.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, committees on special education and preschool special education. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports by the board and central office. Mike?
Just want to thank everybody who came out and supported the teams and their contracts. It's great to see such passion. People really care about the district and what we do here, so it's great to see that, and hopefully, we can come to a amicable solution for everything. Thanks to the presenters, especially on the honor stuff. I know we spoke about that a great deal, so I really appreciate the effort and you guys putting into that. Thank you. Have a good night.
I also want to just thank the hockey team for coming out, showing support, the community that didn't have players on the team that came out and spoke for them, and like Mike said, hopefully, that maybe with something could be worked out, if we can, we could keep hockey in our district would be good. I went to the play of the high school once again, did a great job this weekend, last past weekend. It's never like a school play, I think. It's always like being at a Broadway show. The actors are great, everything is great. They do a wonderful job, so they all should be commended.
Don?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the hockey team for coming out and explaining to us what their passions were. I thought that was really helpful, and again, hopefully, we can work something out. That's good for me.
Suzanne?
I'd also like to thank the hockey team coming out and expressing their concerns, and the CSE members for coming out and supporting their members. I'd also like to thank everyone who presented tonight, and I had the opportunity to go see Beauty and the Beast. That was North Main's production, even though it was at Central Valley. Okay? And I also saw Central Valley's production of Schoolhouse Rock. They were both fabulous. Unfortunately, I missed the performance this weekend, I couldn't make it. But our performances are always so enjoyable, and our kids are so talented. It's amazing. And I know it's our staff that helps get them there, and I want to thank everyone involved. Have a good evening.
Leah?
I wish everyone a good evening.
Margot?
Thank you, Mrs. Brock, for hosting us. This is good. And last night, we hosted the Screenager movie preview at the high school, and it was really interesting to see the, both sides. We had about 150 folks, including some students, and it was a panel discussion at the end. So it was nice to see that, that the fans and kids came out.
Eric?
Just a thank you to everybody who contributed to this evening's presentation, all the administrators, all the department chairs. Everybody had a lot of valued input. I've said enough tonight, other than to quickly recognize our science research kids. We had a bunch of kids compete in the Capital Region Science Competition and Engineering Fair. We had Connor Collins, Colin Gordon, Robert Colbath, and our Pete Patel win very distinguished awards, and there's more information on the website. Congratulations. Have a good night.
Patrick?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend my gratitude to district staff and administrators for their efforts in putting the budget together. It's truly a team effort, everyone's involved, a lot of people are involved, particularly in business office and my staff, Sue Koski and others, Tanya Mulrad were instrumental in getting us to this point. We have a little bit more to go, but the other thing I wanted to do is just extend a special thanks to the buildings and ground staff and transportation staff during our blizzard two weeks ago, and their efforts in snow removal. They really went above and beyond and got us dug out in two days, and not all districts made that. I happen to live in a district that had to take a third day off because of snow removal, or lack thereof. So I just want to thank them, and I know that some of them came in and actually almost risking their personal safety to get in here, and it was well done and greatly appreciated.
Eric?
I'd just like to compliment my colleagues on the presentations that they did this evening and the work that went into it, and also personally congratulate those retiring administrators.
Stacy?
Thank you to the speakers tonight. It was great to see so many come out for the community, between the CSEA members and all of the hockey families, and I thought it was a great show of support, so I definitely commend all of them for coming, especially the young kids that got up and spoke. That's tough to get up there and talk to a bunch of strangers and plead your case, and they did a really, really great job. Thank you to all of our speakers for this evening, for the budget presentation. I had the privilege of attending the Smith Clover Art Show, which was great. They did a wonderful job. It was nice to see how a different school than what my children attended, because we were here at Sapphire, how they put on their art show, and they did a wonderful job. And I did attend the Screenagers show last night, and I think that it should be part of the curriculum for the students to see. I dragged my three teenagers with me. They were not happy at first, but when we left, it led to a pretty decent discussion. So I thank the district for bringing it, because I thought it was a great program. I was sad I couldn't stay for the final panel discussion. Thank you.
My niece was in the middle school play, Singing in the Rain, and that was a great production. Also saw the high school production, Big Fish, as they said, a fantastic production. It is almost like a Broadway production. I would like to thank all the hockey team members and their families for their impassioned pleas to us, and the CSEA members. And I actually was thinking of that wonderful video, the troll video for Kelsey that you guys put out earlier this month, and that was, besides being probably the greatest thing I've seen in a long time, it really, to me, shows the heart of this district and this community. And so even though we have some issues with the hockey team, with the CSEA contract, I know that we will get through them together as a community and as a good district that we are. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Kelsey?
I want to thank Mrs. Brock and the students that presented. They always do such a wonderful job and remind us why we do what we do. I also want to again congratulate our retirees. That's a great accomplishment, when you get to retire and look at the work that you've done. And finally, I just want to say, I want to quote a high school student that said to me, democracy is messy. And you witnessed that today. I am really proud of our students and our parents who came out with a lot of emotion, and we witnessed them talk to us and explain in a very compassionate way why we shouldn't do something that we are thinking of doing. And so that takes a lot of guts, and I'm really proud of the kids, because they were so respectful in the way that they spoke to us, and at the end, I got a chance to speak with them, and they thanked us for just the opportunity to be able to speak. That takes a lot of courage, and I'm really proud of them, and I'm hoping that when we meet, we can figure something out. But again, democracy is messy, and so that's the beauty of what we do, and I want to... Oh, I'm going to turn, I was going to wish everybody a good night and not even let you speak, but I'm only kidding. But I do again, thank everyone for coming out this evening.
I'd like to thank all the speakers from the hockey team, the CSEA, the presenters tonight and all their hard work that goes into it, the middle school and high school drama clubs, and all the cast and crew that go along with it for Singing in the Rain and Big Fish. And I want to thank John for leaving me alone tonight. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.